Welcome everybody to our April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five City Council Study Session. We have four agenda items on our, actually five agenda items on our meeting today. First, we're going to hear about language access and accessibility. Then we'll hear on, report on our compliance update on equity in development. Then we'll hear a Rochester Public Library Master Plan Study Update. And then a PS two comprehensive plan, five-year update. And then we will recess from this room and then the council will go into an executive session after that. So with that, Administrators, Alms, you have any additional items? I will call Jacob Metz to the podium to give us a presentation on language access and accessibility education.
Now am I on? Yes, that's better. Thank you. Okay, so just as a quick overview, I think I've met some of you already. And I presented to the council before in February of twenty twenty-four. But just as an update, my name's Jacob Metz. I am here as part of a two-year law fellowship through the Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Initiative. So I started in July of twenty twenty-three after I got my master's degree in public policy from the Harvard Kennedy School. Since that time, I've worked with Chow as well as Aaron on language access and accessibility as a whole. And what really brought me here is I'm honestly very grateful to be here and working on equity in a city in the Midwest again. Because I was working for the then Deputy Mayor of Racial Equity for the city of St. Louis in twenty seventeen. So right after the protests in Ferguson. So there was a large focus on what does it look like to make sure that there are equitable services to any and all community members regardless of their background, the neighborhood they live in, their identity, the language they speak. And so how do we see what those disparities are? And what can we do to be able to address and then close those disparities so that there are more equitable outcomes? I know that's the mission of us here at the city of Rochester. I know it's Chow's mission as well. So with that, the focus on, or my fellowship was on language access and accessibility. And as I understood it, the scope really boiled down to two main questions. The first one being for language access, how can the city of Rochester best serve and work with community members with limited English proficiency? And then for accessibility, the exact same question. How can the city of Rochester best serve and work with community members with disabilities? So I'll start on the language access portion. And there's a copy of the language access plan that was in the packet for your review, so just noting that. So throughout this presentation, I'll actually refer to the community members who would be able to use these services as non, as having a non-English language preference or NLP. The reason for that is just to make sure that we're using more value-neutral language when describing community members as opposed to saying limited English proficiency, which you would typically see in government documents. We're choosing to use the phrase NLP instead. So just as a quick overview of NLP community members here, according to the last numbers from the American Community Survey, a little over seven thousand one hundred community members are, are NLP. And for reference, Byron has just around sixty-five hundred. So that's basically like a Byron-sized community of folks who we have language barriers with pretty consistently. So the top five non-English languages within Rochester are Spanish, Somali, Arabic, Kamai, and Mandarin. And this was found through a combination of census data, Olmsted County Court Interpreter Requests, and then also data from the school district as well. So also, it's a staggering number, eighty-six home primary languages are spoken in Rochester Public Schools. So we really do have a wide breadth of language diversity here in our community. And these are examples of where city teammates have encountered language barriers in their work. This was found through surveys, talking with community organizations who connect with and represent NLP community members, NLP community members themselves. So just as a quick example on some of these, like paying utility bill or explaining services in the field for RPU, or paying a parking ticket and getting a license for a business with the city clerk's office, or like conducting pre-trial prep work for the city attorney's office. So we see these language barriers come up again and again that teammates have tried to navigate and at points can struggle to navigate when our teammate doesn't know or speak or can write in the same language as community members who we're trying to reach. So as a result, and all of these initiatives you can see in the language access plan, this is what we've tried to do about it since twenty twenty-four. Four main language access initiatives, the first being Language Line for three-one-one and six other city departments. So we have a negotiated rate with the state of Minnesota for a dollar and five cents a minute for whenever we use Language Line, which is an outside service that provides twenty-four-seven on-demand access to interpreters in a wide variety of languages. So one of my favorite examples with this is I had a teammate in community development say that what used to take thirty minutes to talk to someone in like tortured Spanglish, their words, suddenly only took five minutes because of Language Line. So for five dollars and twenty-five cents, that's a pretty good deal in my eyes. One of the second ones is teammates receiving the language pay differential. So we modeled a pilot program, the pay differential is a pilot program off of what we've seen other cities do and other counties do. So if you know and can demonstrate proficiency through testing with an outside service, and we use Alta, language services, that you know one of those top five non-English languages that I showed on the other slide, then you're able to get a stipend on top of each paycheck. And the goal for this is there's a stipend for if you're able to help translate a document. So from written word to written word, interpret, which is spoken, or both. We currently have ten teammates representing four of those top five non-English languages, which is great. It's really great coverage. A good example of how we've been able to use teammates for this already who are receiving the differential is translating material in like a library pamphlet. The rates for translation can be pretty high and probably higher than you might think when you go to an outside service. Sometimes that's the right thing to do and sometimes that's what you have to do when it's more formal legal language. But if it's something that's a little bit more straightforward or an ad, you can use teammates instead who are receiving the differential and then save money. It's that kind of an investment. The third one is an internal process for interpretation and translation requests. So like what I had said on some of these things, you probably need a certified interpreter through IMAA or some other group who's able to help navigate some language barriers if it's a more formal legalistic situation. Or if there's a really dense legal document or a notice of violation letter or something like that, it's probably more appropriate to be able to go to a certified translator or interpreter as opposed to one of our teammates who aren't necessarily certified through like a state certification program. So now we've had a process to allow teammates to know what that looks like. And then the fourth are community connectors. So another pilot program where we now have two community connectors who are part-time, ten hours a week. One for the Spanish-speaking community, one for the Somali-speaking community. And they're able to be more focused on community engagement with organizations representing NLP community members and with NLP community members themselves. That's really the focus there where teammates receiving the pay differential are embedded within the organization and are expected to help provide language assistance and be able to navigate language barriers in like the day-to-day course of their work with any of the services that we provide. So that's more city-focused, whereas the community connectors are, as the name would imply, more community-focused. So for instance, the budget billing process through RPU, I heard an example where we've been able to use community connectors to help Spanish speakers and Somali speakers understand what that program is and their eligibility for it. So for considerations for further implementation with language access, one of the focuses is new teammate orientation and continuing to let teammates know that these are services available to them. That when they come across language barriers, they now have any of the four things that I had discussed in the other slide to be able to help meet language needs. And one of the ways that we've been able to do this now, what we're trying to do now, is have a multilingual communication guide that is available for all teammates to understand when is it more appropriate to use a teammate receiving the pay differential or a community connector or going to like an outside translator or interpreter? There are a lot of options and what that could understandably come, some initial confusion about what's best for what situation. So we've been able to not only talk with folks about how best to use that and when an option is more preferable over another, but we had it written down available on RW, our internet site for teammates. One of the other things is more proactive community engagement with key stakeholders in the area. So making sure that NLP organizations, that NLP community members are more aware of the fact that these are services that we have now. And I know before that we were able to really focus on that, we actually had to make sure we had the resources first. And so we've been able to provide some good help, which I'm grateful for. But I know that we're able to reach a whole host of other folks, you know, thousands more who are NLP who are in our community. So focusing on that community engagement. And then the last part for consideration are language blocks on the bottom of a document or a vital document. So you know, that might look different and we can figure out what that would look like and when that's appropriate. But in the bottom right part of the slide, you'll see that it says, "Attention, if you need free help interpreting this document, call the above number." That appears in English and then below it are several other languages. That language block is taken from the Minnesota Department of Human Services. So more state governments are doing this, some local governments are doing this, where we can be intentional about where we're going to put those language blocks and when. But we could put it, for instance, in English and Spanish and Somali, maybe Arabic, and then potentially route folks through a number that would make the most sense, whether that's three-one-one or some other thing to be able to make sure that people can understand what's actually on the document and then go from there. So that's, that's definitely the goal with language access and some considerations going forward. So on the accessibility piece, very similar, I'll focus on, at first, on disability data in Rochester. So this is also from the census. So around twelve thousand community members have a disability according to the census. The census has a specific way of understanding if someone has a disability or not based off of asking them if they can do certain daily activities. So this very well could be an undercount, but it is currently the data that we have that around twelve thousand or around ten percent of all members of our community do have a disability. So for the, some key takeaways I really wanted to highlight from the National Community Survey. The National Community Survey is something that, you know, that we did last summer in twenty twenty-four. And for the first time, we actually asked a question that was, "Do you or someone in your household have a physical, mental, or emotional disability?" That's not a question that we had asked before and we thought it would be necessary to include that question so that we could disaggregate the results based off of that and that alone to be able to learn a little bit more about disabled people in our community, learn about what it is that we can do better. You know, we just get a, get a benchmark. So three of the main takeaways. The first one is that disabled people and those in their households don't feel as engaged or as represented in Rochester. So for all the questions that were on the survey, a good number of them where we saw a pretty great discrepancy at a statistically significant level between people who answered yes, that they are disabled or someone in their houses and people who answered no to that question. A lot of that discrepancy came on feeling, "Do you feel included? Do you feel seen? Do you feel consulted?" But some of it was about more specific city services or more specific city departments. But overwhelmingly, that was one of the main focuses, is a feeling that people weren't included, that they were not consulted, that they aren't represented. So that's one of the things that we really wanted to, to highlight from that. And a good reason why we included that question in the community survey too, so we could get that result. One of the others is that disabled people and those in their households don't view public safety as favorably in Rochester. That's another thing that we've seen. And that is something perhaps for further consideration as well, to understand how do we address that and maybe close those gaps. And then lastly, a clear majority of all respondents to that survey, so people who answered yes and no to that question, don't view housing options favorably in Rochester. And in fact, if you went and burrowed a little bit deeper, of people who did answer yes to that question that they have a disability or someone in their household does, only nine percent of those people thought that there were good affordable housing options in our community. So something to think about and definitely some room for opportunity there to be able to address it. One of the other things I wanted to include, and this is something I can get into over time, are models of disability. So this is something that disability advocates say that largely society views disability within two main ways. One is the, through a medical model and one is through a social model. So for the medical model disability, the thought is that people view disability as something to be fixed or something to be cured and something that would need to be addressed. So like health and, the health and social services profession, folks in nonprofits, folks in the government, focusing it on, as something to like quote-unquote remedy. Whereas the social model says, as you can see on that slide, that disability is just a difference. That there's differences with, you know, physically, cognitively, but that disability results from certain social barriers in society and that it would be the responsibility of people in power, of people in government, in the health and social services profession to try to address those barriers to promote full and inclusive participation, right? In our, in programs, in the built environment and being mindful of those accommodations and trying to go above and beyond that. So those are two of the main models of disability. So our goal with our work on accessibility here for the city of Rochester is making sure that we're trying to do things through the social model lens and then go from there. So apologies for that. So on this part for the accessibility change management plan, that's one of the things that we're currently doing right now, working with community members as well as city teammates to have like, understand a better baseline related to accessibility within the city of Rochester across our city services and programs and activities, and then trying to figure out a way to address them. So some of the things that we saw with the National Community Survey results as well as things that we're hearing. And there were a couple of different things that are informing that plan as we're working through it. And first and foremost, our cross-disability focus group. And we have a couple of members here today of that cross-disability focus group, which was a group of around ten or eleven community members, the majority of whom have disabilities, some of whom are social service providers and some of whom are family members of folks with disabilities to try to get a good broad array of what disability looks like in our community. So through their input, through asking questions, through meeting with city teammates with, who are from different departments and who do different things within those departments, trying to get a more of a dialogue going about, you know, what's working? Where can we better, where can we be better and where do we go from here? One of the other aspects was the Americans with Disabilities Act, making sure that we're compliant with that. So one of the last times I, or the last time that I had spoken to the council during a study session, I brought up the need for a reasonable accommodation procedure as well as a grievance procedure. So we now have that on our website on RochesterMN.gov on the DEI page. So for reference, both of those are required processes under the ADA. The grievance procedure is required if a community member believes that they have been discriminated against in the provision of city services or programs that they have a process to be able to go through that's clear to them, that's clear to city teammates about how to address and resolve that. We now have that process and have been able to use it. And it's been successful up until now to be able to help resolve and address anything that comes through any submission. Similarly, with the reasonable accommodation process, that's also on the DEI page of our website. And that could be something like getting a sign language interpreter at an event or special seating for a council meeting or anything else that you can think of in that vein. So that's one of the other processes that we now have and that's also covered in this plan about how we got there, what that looks like. Also, one of, two of the other things that really influenced this were benchmarking accessibility programs in other cities. So cities that are comparably size, cities of comparable demographics, and also cities that are bigger than us and are smaller than us, just to see where are we relative to peer cities, relative to other cities in the area and the country? Because it would make sense that as the home of the Mayo Clinic, we could aspire to be a good example of how a city should handle and address accessibility. So with that in mind and with that aspiration in mind, I tried to benchmark cities accordingly. And then of course, interviews with community members and city teammates to be able to understand what works best for Rochester's context. And then when talking with members of the cross-disability focus group, where, where are we better able to integrate community members into our engagement processes? So out of all of that, we came up with, these are the areas of the accessibility change management plan as we're, as it's currently being written. So one of the focuses was a guide on language regarding disability. So just making sure that people are on the same page about different types of disabilities, what they mean, how they're understood, the language regarding disabilities, it can be more specific if you are not already familiar with it to begin with. The other piece is legal background and history. So understanding what legislation got us here, relevant legislation like the ADA, like the Rehabilitation Act and Section five oh four of, of the Rehabilitation Act and other like key aspects of disability rights legislation and history. We thought it was important to put that, that a lot of folks, you know, when they grow up, they'll learn about, you know, giants of the civil rights movement. You've probably have heard of Martin Luther King Jr., but you may not have heard of Judy Hume or Ed Roberts with the Independent Living Movement. That's a notable part of the disability justice movement. To be honest, I hadn't until I was going through this and I thought it would be important that in our larger plan about how we actually as a city plan to be more accessible, build that baseline and grow that we should also, you know, use that opportunity of, if you want to learn more, you can look at this plan. Here are some other places for you to look at to learn more about the history. And then data on disability in Rochester and survey results from the community survey. So what, like what we had just talked about in the beginning of the accessibility portion of the presentation. And ultimately, we had come up with seven broad areas to focus on at first for getting that baseline, for understanding what could be certain considerations and then ultimately recommendations once we get your feedback and feedback from other departments. So transportation, housing, infrastructure projects, so like built environment and construction, disability awareness, accessibility of the city's website, accessibility of city parks and recreation programs, and then trying to improve employment opportunities for disabled people here at the city. So those are seven broad areas that we had come to as a focus group and then also looking at how other cities approach accessibility. So to go into that, here are some considerations that we came to for transportation and housing. As a quick background for transportation, some of the main modes of public transport for disabled people within our city are of course Zips with paratransit, the fixed route bus, RPT Go if they live in the eligible area for RPT Go, and then private options, which sometimes, like Uber or Lyft, which sometimes can be more pricey and that can price people out of being able to go where they need to go. And some of the main barriers that we had come across, which I know have come before this council before and I know have probably been discussed in the community are the timeliness of our Zip service, so trying to improve that. Certain, some customer service considerations as well, so trying to improve communication between passengers, Zips passengers and Zips drivers. And then also making sure that people are aware that the fixed route bus is an option for them. I think that that's a common misconception I've come across is the idea that if someone has a disability, they're only able to ride Zips, which is not true. The eligibility for Zips or for paratransit is if you are unable to ride the fixed route bus on account of your disability. So trying to boost awareness and education about that, that the fixed route bus absolutely can be an option. It is meant for anyone. So resulting from that here, so these are some of the considerations that we've thought about to try to address some of those barriers that they came up in the focus group. So travel training programs, so being able to train people on how best to ride the fixed route bus or what that would look like, potentially how to ride Zips. Travel training programs exist in other cities, run by other cities. They also are things that currently are run here by certain other organizations too, like SEMSL. So there's some opportunities for partnership there. Updating our website on RPT, our RPT website with specific accessibility information about our fixed route buses. Accessibility-focused trainings for Zips drivers and fixed route drivers to try to address some of the customer service considerations that have come up. And then being able to track your Zips ride, that's another thing that has come up pretty consistently is both the timeliness of Zips and then trying to understand where your ride is at a given moment. I know that that's been a source of frustration, so trying to figure out how to address that and what it would take to actually do that. For the housing piece of it, one of the things I had really come across, and I think that that community survey result really speaks to that, is there isn't really a good common understanding about the state of accessible housing in Rochester. You know, what are the options? When you say accessible, what do you mean by that? Because there's definitely one focus of accessible housing through the state accessibility code, which I know is what the city has to follow and all that. And there's the understanding of how people experience that, wondering, "Is this home accessible for me? Is this apartment unit accessible for me?" So trying to get some greater communication there so that people can be on the same page about what does accessibility actually mean? Understanding state of accessible housing and then understanding the existing supply of it and how to connect people to that supply. Those are all considerations that are things that we need to work on a little bit more, get a little bit more clarity on. So that's why one of the considerations for that is collecting further data to understand the state of accessible housing, because we want this to be as data-informed as possible. Or connecting with key stakeholders like Olmsted County and the Rochester Housing Alliance on accessible housing. And we had a meeting on that that was productive. I hope Councilmember Dorian can attest to that. He was there as well. That we had some good conversation about what that could look like. Similarly, trying to raise awareness of programs that are relevant, to be able to make accessibility improvements. If you're already in your home, you know, what are some of those programs that exist? And just trying to make sure that we're doing a strategic, we're trying to strategically engage with trying to connect people with those programs. For built environment and construction, we've heard several times the, this belief that there isn't, that people, when disabled people are engaged in the process, if it ends up happening, it can be a little bit later in the process. Instead of maybe a little bit earlier in the design process, that's something that community members have surfaced. So trying to make sure that there's a connection and a touch point between city teammates and disabled people on any plan for the built environment or for construction. So with that in mind, trying to develop a consultation guide for city teammates. So now, here's who you can talk to, here's, you know, what issues you can talk to about, or that you can talk with certain groups about, so trying to make sure that more people are aware of those options. And also, in the same way, that, because it's a two-way street, trying to create intentional processes for community members to provide feedback on projects. So making that clear throughout the process as something is either being built or even when there's accessible routes or temporary accessible routes as a result of private construction, making sure that those routes are indeed accessible and that city teammates can be made aware of that and then be able to address it properly. And then disability awareness I'll come to in a couple of slides. But for the other pieces of it, for the digital accessibility piece, one of the things that we have to do through a rule from the US Department of Justice is to make sure that our city website is compliant with what's called web content accessibility guidelines, two-point-one level double-A compliance. That's a mouthful. So what that effectively means is there are certain guidelines for what it actually looks like to have an accessible website that you have to follow, that the federal government adopted and then required state and local governments to adopt by next year. In fact, almost exactly a year from the state. So for instance, making sure that you mark content on your website as headers so that if anyone's using a screen reader, they're able to follow along appropriately as someone who would just be able to see the information. Or trying to make sure that the font is a certain size or being aware of color contrast for anyone who might be colorblind looking at that content. We're well on our way to being able to comply with that and I, I'm very confident that we're going to meet it because of the wonderful work of our teammate Wes Goss, who's done a lot of work on that coordinating people. So we're very close to being able to be ready for that, even a year out, which is good news. And one of the other considerations with the, with digital accessibility is considering installing an accessibility plugin on the city website. So there are a number of ways that something like this could happen. A good example is SEMSL's website where someone is able to customize content on the website based on them and there's a plugin that allows them to do that. Whether it's, you know, making the spaces in letters in a word a little bit bigger or whether it's changing the colors of a website, a plugin allows someone to be able to, to change it accordingly. So that's something to consider. With the Parks and Recreation Focus, one of the things that we already do currently is Parks and Rec runs a adaptive equipment lending program. So for water buggies, all-terrain track chairs, and that's working pretty well. But just making sure that people are made aware of the accommodations process above and beyond that, they spoke about a little bit before. So trying to promote the different things that Parks and Rec run are for people of all abilities. Making sure that the language can reflect that and that we're putting in accommodations or making it clear that people can request accommodations through that existing form and through that existing process. form and through that existing process. And then considering trying to conduct a more thorough self-evaluation of city park and facilities. So seeing again, where is there room for growth? How can we try to make aspects of facilities more accessible? How can we connect with community members with disabilities on how best to do that? What's working and what's not working? That's what's entailed with that self-evaluation. And then finally, for employment for the city of Rochester, similar to what I had said for Parks and Rec, trying to make it clear on our job postings and our application processes that we have an accommodation process. That's not something that is currently clear, so trying to make it a little bit clearer that if someone does need a certain accommodation to fill out an application, to be, to, to fill out an application, any kind of accommodation during an interview, that it's made clear to them how they could do so. And then similarly, conducting an environmental scan of the workplace and trying to conduct more intentional outreach to folks about employment opportunities at the city. I think a good example of that is, you know, like an accessibility check or an environmental scan of our council chambers or of the city hall and trying to be made aware of that. In fact, even before this, you know, I was told, and this is something I've been made aware of, you know, thinking about door openers and what does that look like? And just trying to make sure that the built environment of our workplace is such that so that if someone with a disability is going to apply, that they can be successful here. And then I wanted to follow up with disability awareness because I really think that the thing that runs through all of this, through all the aspect of the accessibility change management plan, all of our work on accessibility, the conversations that I've had with the cross-disability focus group, is trying to raise awareness about people with disabilities in Rochester and in our community. And that one of the main ways that we could do that is trying to centralize accessibility coordination by increasing staff capacity. There are a number of ways to be able to get at that, but I know that we already have folks in Parks and Rec who run our adaptive rec program, people in Public Works who are focused on accessibility language, same with our planners, community development. The list really does go on, but just making sure that there's a centralized focus on it so that when we are making decisions about accessibility or how to best engage with disabled people, that we're made aware of how all the other parts of the machine are working, you know, that the left hand knows what the right hand's doing. So that's one of the main focuses of why I think it would be beneficial and why through our conversations, it could be beneficial to centralize that coordination and work more intentionally together. And similarly, create an intentional method to receive input from disabled people in Rochester. So I think the cross-disability focus group is a great example of what that could look like, of having a group of community members who can provide a touch point for city staff pretty consistently about, you know, if city staff needs or city teammates need to help get something reviewed or anything like that, that they can go to a focus group, they can go to a group of community members to be able to have that two-way communication. Because a large part of these recommendations are just about more intentional, more strategic engagement with community members with disabilities and making sure that we are on the same page as city teammates about accessibility work that we're currently doing. And then that last point is hosting an annual disability summit. So we've seen other cities host disability summits and in fact, we're going to host one as well in July because July is disability pride month, so trying to make that clear for folks. The way that we're going to host our disability summit is do it similar to how the Equity Series functions, to where it'll be three separate sessions throughout the month of July. So one about history of disability rights in Rochester primarily and what that has looked like here and all the wonderful work that has happened from advocates in this area decades ago until now. The second one, understanding issues that disabled people face within our community and what that looks like. And then that last one being, where do we go from here? And the idea of making it annual is that it has like a built-in benchmarking time, timeframe to be able to say, you know, here's what we said we'd do in July 2025, where are we at in July 2026? And so that it isn't just something that the city would do, but it's a coalition of the willing, that it's the city, potentially the county, other like stakeholders within Rochester to figure out how can we make the most accessible community possible based off of what we came up with during the summer. So for anticipated next steps, for pending your feedback today, the Language Access Plan could return to the council as a report and recommendation. And then for accessibility and for that change management plan, we're working it through currently with city teammates, city department heads, making sure that we're tightening up language and figuring out about the feasibility of different things written in there and pending your feedback today and departmental review that also could come back as a, you know, additional study session or report and recommendation. I also know, you know, as just a capper on this, and because I know I've talked a lot and I really want to get to your questions, that I, a large part of what we're trying to focus on is trying to address disparities, close them and make sure that what was on that slide about disabled people feeling like they are not represented, they do not have a voice, that we're meaningfully addressing that and doing the effort to meaningfully address that. And trying to acknowledge, you know, where are those disparities and how do we close that? So regardless of someone's ability or disability, regardless of the language they speak, that they can engage with us, they do have a voice, they are represented and any of our city services or programs that they can be fully enjoyed by all members of our community. So that is the goal. That's what we're trying to strive towards. So with that, I promise I will stop talking and I will leave it to y'all for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Metz. Well, I mean, you've been here, what, 18 months and you've uncovered all of this? So congratulations on
Thank you.
great work that you did for the city. I do have a question on the first point of your last slide, Pending Council Feedback Language, Language Access Plan. How do you see that coming back to us? Are we asking for budget for that or? I'm looking to Administrator Zales, but she's not looking to me.
I thought you were asking Jacob.
You can, you can start.
My understanding, Council President Schubring had asked about that first bullet point and how the Language Access Plan would come back to the council for review. It was my understanding that, you know, any questions that you could have about language that exists in that plan, any recommendation for changing it, that we could change that language in the plan accordingly. And then in terms of how else it could come to the council for review, I'll give it to Administrator Zales.
Sure. Thanks, Jacob, Mr. Metz, Council President Schubring. Yes, and one of the things that is in the attachment to this, to this study session is the draft Language Access Plan. A number of those things, as Mr. Metz represented, have been in piloted programs. So if you have something like 10 folks that are qualified and have been through the process for being able to receive the Language Access Pay, which is a stipend and has sort of a moving scale depending on the variety of different things you're able to do. Those are things that have been absorbable within departmental budgets because they haven't all come from the same place. If we were drastically seeing more uptake of that in one department, for example, that might be something that would need to also come back to you as a budget adjustment. Even that wouldn't necessarily be drastic. One employee achieving the maximum is about $1,500 a year. So it's not as if that's a, you know, gigantic amount of dollars. But I would suggest what we've done in the past is it has come back for, because this has implications potentially long-term to be able to address some of these things, although most of the Language Access Plan is, I would say, smaller impacts, whether they would be financial or indirect, could be either, we've done this as adopt, accept or file. And so if there's any feedback on that, that could either happen on that, that evening or not. But if there's feedback that there's concerns about something, that's something that we could take into consideration and depending on how divergent that might be from what's in the packet, we might need a little bit more time or it could come back either sometimes on consent or sometimes on reports and recommendations depending on the feedback that we receive.
All right. Thank you for that context. I had one, one more question, more specific on the community connectors in the Language Accessibility. Can you, can you talk a little bit more about what they do? And my understanding is there's two FDEs. Do they go out to the community, give presentations or talk a little bit more about what those folks do for us?
Sure. So for the community connectors, they're part-time. So there's one focused on the Spanish-speaking community and they each work 10 hours a week. And there's a second who is focused on the Somali-speaking community. And a large part of what they're doing is trying to get the word out to the NLP organizations or I guess I should say organizations that are connected with Spanish speakers or connected with Somali speakers about different city programs, city events. So I know when we hosted the Snow Summit, when Rochester Public Works hosted the Snow Summit, that's a good example of trying to make sure that they get the word out more to folks about that. I know that's an A dimension of what they do as well as trying to help people navigate programs as they exist now currently. So like the budget billing program with RPU, I think that that's another great example of sitting with different community members who are Somali-speaking or Spanish-speaking to go through what that looks like and providing a little bit greater guidance on how to connect with us and understanding, you know, different language. They also have been helpful with translating documents and being another set of eyes on that, that, you know, one of the, just like with writing, just in general, how you want someone to review a rough draft before it goes out. One of the things that we have found is when we have teammates who are receiving the differential, who can provide translation for something, that they can give a first go at it and then a community connector, if it's in Spanish or Somali, is able to go through and review language and help to tighten it up. And I don't know if Chow has any other things that she wants to say about the community connectors.
Yeah, thank you for your question, Council President Schubring, sorry. In addition to that, they are always aware or keep in mind upcoming, whether it's events or programming within the city. And then they take a lot of our documents that are predominantly in English and translate those, whether they're flyers or notices or notifications for hearings, that type of thing, to ensure that those communities stay engaged and have an understanding of what's happening within the city. But even providing them information on how they can meaningfully connect, how to utilize services. One of the things that they've been working on in the last week is 311. You know, we have the app. How do you download the app? How do you utilize it? How do you enter your information? So that's what I would add to that. So very meaningful, not only as a language translation, but also bridging that cultural gap and barrier in terms of what civic engagement might mean to one community versus how interpreted in our own community.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Wall?
Thank you. A lot of slides ago, you mentioned benchmarking and then late in your presentation, you did the same. While you mentioned it, I didn't hear any results. How does Rochester benchmark against similar-sized cities or Minnesota cities?
Do you mean for both language access and accessibility? Just in general?
I think it was in language when it came up in the, but just you've done this for the 18 months? You've got a wealth of information.
Sure. For benchmarking specifically, I first started with looking at, you know, where are cities of comparable-sized demographics, a comparable size and comparable demographics? How are they handling things and how are they addressing things as the first cities I wanted to look at? So for instance, I did look at like Ann Arbor, Michigan, because they're very similar to us in terms of population. You know, we're a little around 124,000 and they're around 120,000. So it's pretty similar in size and scope, just to understand how do they handle something like accessibility, for instance? So that recommendation related to a self-evaluation of Parks and Rec facilities and just Parks just period was something that was influenced by them to see, well, if a city that is comparably sized is looking at things that way, perhaps that's something that we should be thinking of as well. So that's one aspect of it is going from there, as well as trying to interview people who are in those other cities, just to understand, how did you get going? What does this look like? And also trying to look at things from the lens of a community member. So if I was on a website, would I know how to navigate it and would I know how to access some of these programs that they told me about in like a one-on-one conversation? And then trying to see that, it, good news for them, I could, I could see what it looked like, but being able to, you know, figure that out and go from there. So that's a large part of what I had seen is trying to see it from the lens of a community member and how you would navigate the website, understand these programs, and then also talking with like a language access coordinator or the employee who has been designated to focus on accessibility in other cities and understanding how are they handling things and what are some of the things that they started out with? So for instance, I talked with someone who, not from a comparably sized city, but from Toledo, who had suggested really connect with your Centers for Independent Living, really make that clear because that's one of the best allies you'll have, that's one of the best stakeholders and most meaningful stakeholders that you'll have in accessibility work, which is why a large part of what we've been doing is connecting with SEMSL and trying to strengthen ties with SEMSL and understand, you know, where can we be plugged in? So on that travel training example, for instance, with transportation, SEMSL already provides travel training for community members with disabilities to understand how to ride the fixed route bus, how to read a bus schedule, you know, how to go from route to route. So where is there room for Rochester Public Transit to potentially work with them on either getting the word out or helping to supplement what they already do so that we're not reinventing the wheel? That is not something I'm not sure I would have come to or really would have realized had it not been for that tip of, I probably would have reached out to SEMSL because I know what they mean to this community, but looking at it from the idea of when you're building programs from the ground up, really talk to, you know, your Center for Independent Living. So in a large way, that's what that looked like. And going forward, I also can provide that research as well from what I found from benchmarking other cities, either for their language access programs or their accessibility programs. I definitely have it. It's all in the spreadsheet. I'll try to make it cleaner for people.
You are drilling down to very specific examples.
Yes.
Mostly I want to know is, is Rochester way behind and struggling to catch up? Are we on track? Where is Rochester in terms of benchmarking?
Sure. I appreciate that clarification. For language access, I think that we're now more in like the middle of the pack because we have those resources available for folks. So I think that we're doing a good job on that. In terms of accessibility, candidly, I think we probably do have a long way to go in terms of making that clear for people and making it clear that the accommodations process is something that's available for people or having more intentional proactive community engagement with people. And there are things that we're trying currently, like the disability summit in July or the fact that we have our accommodations process available, but there's definite ground to be made up on that that I've found, not only from cities that are our size, but also cities that are smaller. And again, like I really feel that as like the home of the Mayo Clinic, it would make sense for us to really be like best-in-class when it comes to accessibility and when it comes to accessible programs and accessible built environment. And though we're not there yet, I know that we are taking steps to get there. A great example is with the new construction at Soldier's Field and with that project there, I know that as part of a working group, there was, there were people with disabilities on that working group who were able to provide input on certain services that could be provided at the water park. I think that that's the exact kind of thing that we should be doing, you know, that kind of community engagement, working with people from, you know, like a cross-disability focus group or community members to get their input. You know, there, even though there's a long ways to go, I think, to be able to be that best-in-class, be that aspiration, I think that the answers in terms of how to get there, like, I don't believe that all of them are as difficult as they might sound. So I know that the room that we have to make up is a lot, but in terms of being able to get there, I think that starting out with just more intentional, strategic community engagement with people, I really think it goes a long way. I've found that with the focus group and I've found that with people who aren't necessarily expecting to get an answer back on certain things. And when you do talk with them respectfully, you talk with them one-on-one, I think that they really appreciate it because they know that they're being seen, that they, that they do feel represented, that there's a collaborative partnership that's there. So I absolutely think there's room to get there and I think we're on our way to getting there, but it'll definitely take effort from city teammates to be able to get to that point.
More questions?
I do, but there are many of us up here and we have spent a lot of time, so.
Councilmember Doring?
Mr. Metz, I also want to commend you on your work here in the city and, and the work of the amazing group of people you're working with, Cross Disability Focus Group. I know many of them as strong advocates in the community and I appreciate the attention they're bringing to accessibility in our community. My question is, what is the succession plan? Right? So your time here with us is now limited. What is the plan to keep this work moving forward once you are no longer a part of the city?
I really appreciate that question because that's something that we've been thinking through as well. So part of that is working with our DEI Director, Director Mattella, on what are some of the things that I'm doing currently that better, like more intentional community engagement meetings, like that are monthly. So for instance, we have like an accessible transportation meeting to talk about transportation issues where RPT staff, myself and community members can be part of that. Like, how do you make sure that those meetings are still staffed? So part of that is talking and a conversation with Chow about making sure that those meetings can still continue. And then for some of these other things, I am working along with Chow with trying to talk with different teammates throughout city departments for when they do have questions, you know, here's how you would go about with this sort of intentional community engagement. So I think like the accessibility consultation guide for our public works teammates or anyone who's focused on construction, that's something that I have received questions about, oh, that would be a really good idea to be able to get this input a lot earlier in the process so it doesn't lead to retrofitting costs or anything like that. What's the best way to do so? And now there will be a guide that they can follow so that we can handle. And now there will be a guide that they can follow so that we can hand that off. So I really appreciate that question because a succession plan has been high on my mind as well. So making sure that people are aware of how they can best engage with people, who to talk to, the most appropriate ways and easiest ways to do so, and then how to keep those meetings going, that's admittedly a conversation we're having right now to figure that out, but it is a conversation that's being had. And I don't know if Chow, if you want to throw in anything more on that.
Councilmember Doring, thank you for your question. And I would add, being really thoughtful and getting your feedback as a council about what would be most meaningful or possible going forward. I know communities have done various things to move this work forward in the most meaningful way. So as we listen to our community members, one of the things that they said was really appreciating the opportunity to be part of conversation or having the transit meetings that Jacob talked about, for them to share their experiences within that space. So that being something that is very meaningful, how do we make sure it continues to go forward? And certainly having conversations with city administrators, Elms, on, you know, what's a transition plan? And if, once we have that feedback from you, we're able to go forward.
I have one more question, if that's okay. I appreciate the data that you provided, that 10% of our community in Rochester is identified as disabled and in a, an emphasis to create a city staffing plan that represents that community. I'm wondering what percentage of our city staff currently is, would identified as part of the disabled community?
I don't have that percentage immediately at hand. Chow or Administrator Zalms, would you know that percentage off the top of your head?
Okay.
I would answer is that's not a question that we would, that is typically put into the record.
Though it is a good question, because that is something that, to that point about employment at the city of Rochester, that is a huge part of why we want to be intentional about this, is we want city teammates to be reflective of the community that we serve. That is a core goal that I know that we share. And I think that an aspect of that is making sure that if we are going to have disabled teammates at the city of Rochester, and we do, we do, but in terms of the actual number off the top of my head, I don't know as of now, then we have to make sure that the workplace that we have for them is meaningfully, that they're able to meaningfully navigate it, that it is accommodating, that we are made more aware of what it looks like to make sure that someone could come to work every day, whether that's an accommodation process that they need, which is something they can work with our human resources teammates on, or whether there's something in the built environment that we should be made aware of and it could be a consideration for a future solution.
All right. Councilmember Keen.
Hi, yes, thanks for being here, Mr. Metz. I will try to keep this tight here, but just on the language, it's good to see those statistics that there are like, you know, these five ones we're looking at, 86 total, but there's really the two main ones in the way we're looking at this. I want to ask if there's any direction here towards bilingual or do we do business in English and that we're trying to help in these other languages? Or do you foresee a day where the city of Rochester would have a contracted RPU or something that's in another language?
I mean, another great question in terms of thinking through the future of what this work could look like. For now, what we're thinking through is because we're trying to build it out and have the resources available, we want to make sure that, yes, primarily we're doing our business in English because most of the people who live here are English speakers or the solid majority are. But I think going forward, it could be something that's worthy of consideration. So for instance, with our pay differential policy, those top five non-English languages that teammates can test for, they're as determined by the city of Rochester, depending on what the data ends up looking like. So if there was a point in the future where there was a considerable portion of our community that was NLP community members, I think it's worthy of consideration. And back to Councilmember Wall's question, that is something I've seen other cities that have a pretty large percentage of non-English speakers do.
Yeah, yeah, and I want to make sure I don't get misinterpreted here. I'm not working towards that. When I look at a 6% and I look at all the languages in this, I still think of us as the city of Rochester does business in English and we are trying to accommodate and help what we can. But I also, I guess I want to get that stated, that this is like an overreach to make people feel more welcome, but it isn't a change towards, because I don't think our numbers would at all support any sort of bilingual staff or anything else. I know at RPU and this other thing, this idea of having more language capability, I think it's wonderful. I've seen that in businesses and it really helps them operate and makes it more accessible. But it's a, it's a much bigger step to say you're bilingual and that you, now that at some point we would have some revocable permit here that's signed by somebody in a different language and we're trying to approve it. I think that's a step that's way past where we're at right now.
Sure. And to, so for me to also provide a clarification as well, that's not something that I think that this work is geared towards at all. It is with what you were saying to where primarily the business that we're doing is in English and then we're able to provide accommodations for people who may need it in other languages. If the data reflects it, I know that's a future conversation that's probably well into the future and not as of now, because as of now, when there isn't like a large percentage of people who are NLP community members, it may not justify that, but in our eyes, it certainly does justify trying to provide as, you know, as many accommodations as we possibly can to make sure that they get assistance in the language that they need. But primarily, yes, the language that, you know, we're doing business in is in English.
And then just a comment, and maybe you could respond to it, just on the disability side of this. Again, same thing, I really appreciate that, you know, that Rochester's sort of looking out and saying, how are we accommodating? What are the things we can do, especially when it leads you to something that is good for everybody at some point? And I think I've seen some good results there. I appreciate the way you broke things down into transportation and housing, transportation being the main one right now the city's in. The housing is something that we're following state law more so than we are, and then there's the private sector and what they're doing. But again, I've watched things like when I look at our buses that are coming in, how they accommodate, I watch park and rec, not only what they accommodate, but then the programs they're offering. But I wouldn't want to do much more when you start, Councilmember Doring's question on 10%. I mean, I think those numbers, we would need to have a much better source of data than a survey of self-identifying to start quoting 10% disability, just from, especially if you start building a policy on it. So it's just something I'm going to warn on. Any comments on that?
Sure, in terms of the 10% number?
Yeah.
That's something that's from the census and I agree with you, that I would want to have more robust forms of data to, you know, both on accessible housing as an issue and then just on community members as a whole, in order to like make the most strategic decisions. That 10% could be an undercount based off how the census does ask those questions. So it's a good data point to be able to put in front of the council and also the public to say, you know, from what we know, here's what we know of disabled people in Rochester relative to the rest of the population, you know, what is the percentage there? In terms of making some of these other decisions, some of them are just trying to be in line with the Americans with Disabilities Act on reasonable accommodations and, you know, within what we as a city are able to do and able to provide under the requirements from the ADA, we got to make sure that we provide some of those accommodations. And then in terms of just interactions with community members as a whole and trying to get their input, I know that we think that that's a best practice when we think about, you know, the kind of service that we're providing to folks so that we are making the effort to be able to do it and build this out. And so even though that is 10%, it is still like around 12,000 people for what that is. Like, that's certainly not an insignificant number.
I'm going to cut you off there. We, I think we allotted maybe 45 minutes, so if you can be just a little more concise in your answers and, and don't feel a need if, if a council member is stating their view, you don't have to, I mean, if the council member asks for your view, give it, but give it concisely.
Okay.
Councilmember Miller.
Just a brief question. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your work. I share Councilmember Doring's questions about the succession plan, but I guess I would start with just direct feedback to these anticipated next steps. You mentioned that the web accessibility is making good progress. Would love to just have a sense of the progress of each of the items. Are they brand new, would be starting? Are we in process? Are we nearing completion as the next step? That would be super helpful to understand and perhaps any prioritization of which ones would have the biggest impact. And then I would just note that I feel like we've had versions of accessibility in the conversation of strategic priorities and I wonder, perhaps this is a question for Administrator Zalms, is this work, which has been through a fellowship, represented in our current set of foundational principles and strategic priorities, or is that a clarification that would be needed for council in addition to moving forward to the language access plan and an accessibility change management plan as we think about the budget process and the staffing support?
Council President Schubring, Councilmember Miller, I would say it is representative of the existing strategic plan and foundational principles. I think what gets more challenging is that many things are representative in those and so it's still helpful, big picture strategic plan question to clarify for this body, what specifically is, you know, are you looking for in your strategic priorities and goals? And some of those are probably going to be larger than your budget appetite. However, we have those for a reason because we also then have to prioritize and that will be part of what you get to enjoy doing this year. As things come forward, how do you prioritize those? And that doesn't mean that you can accomplish everything, but it also doesn't mean that you can't accomplish anything. I believe this falls within the current strategic priority of affordable quality services, where we had talked about subbullets within there that talked about accessibility and things of that nature. But it could still fall within the discussion that you had at your last two discussions of strategic priority. It really gets to how do we, you specifically define those things? And ideally, strategic priorities are pretty high level and don't get to the, and then they're implementable based on iterative actions that the city council would be able to take to be able to look at the near term and the long term.
Okay, thank you. And just final comment, I just want to address and acknowledge that we have community members here who have been part of this process and to me as a council member, it means a lot when you show up. It makes me feel confident that Mr. Metz is sharing your perspective and your input in this plan, so thank you for being here.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Palmer.
Ms. Zalms, in your last statement, I'm trying to figure out, you're not going to recommend any more FTEs, are you?
Council President, we're still going through the budget process and understanding what the decision package requests are, and so I'm still formulating what my recommended budget will be based on input from the team and then we'll go through a process with the city council.
Okay. And then you were talking about housing and in the state building code, we've had for a long period of time, we can't exceed that. So are you trying to change the building code? What do you, you keep talking about housing and changes. I don't know where we would go with that.
So not changes to that, because that's not something that we're able to do in terms of the state accessible or state accessibility code, but in terms of getting a clear understanding of what are the accessible housing options available that had to be built in compliance with that code, you know, making it clear to people, what is that supply and how can they get connected to units that are available for them? That's a conversation we've been having with the Housing Alliance.
Doesn't SEMSL do that already?
So I think that that's something that we wanted to make sure that we could grow that conversation to where it isn't just from SEMSL, but it also includes like the Rochester Housing Alliance and we've had a meeting on that. So we're trying to figure out some next steps to figure, you know, to think through, what could it look like to be able to connect people with those housing options and understanding what they are?
But Olmsted County already does that.
I'm sorry?
Olmsted County already does that. So there's two that I know off the top of my head. Why would, why would that become something the city would want to do?
Well, when, did you want to say something, Ms. Zalms?
I just think it would be helpful to point out that I think many of you went to the Housing Coalition meeting and one of the things that was raised is making sure we continue to update which units are accessible and affordable. So there's also the component of within the network that Olmsted County is providing. Typically, those have not been tracked as accessible for certain types of disabled community members. So someone might be going through the system, but it's not easy to understand if what you're in line for is actually something that you would be able to live in. So just improving on that so that, yes, great work is happening. How do we make sure that if someone isn't connected to SEMSL, if someone isn't, but, and someone doesn't realize they could be connected to the county and maybe qualify for that, that it's not a constant set of question marks as to whether or not being in the line is going to be helpful to you because when you reach the top of the line, it may be for a unit that you actually can't live in. So really building on the work and making sure that variety of different groups are aware so that whether, wherever someone is entering the conversation, whether that's through Olmsted County, through SEMSL, through the Housing Alliance, name the thing, that there's a better understanding and more current data of what's available.
Mayor Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jacob, when's your last day?
July 10.
Okay. So first, I want to acknowledge that Jacob's position here was part of the Bloomberg City Initiative. We applied for it and it was funded for two years. So thank you for accepting our, I know Aaron Parrish was really instrumental in writing up that application and thank you for accepting it. And we want to thank Bloomberg for funding your position for two years. And for one hot minute, we thought Jacob might be here permanently, but his life has taken him some place else. So I want to thank you for your work for the last two years. We'll say goodbye in July. And I look forward to, are you going to do the summit while you're here? Okay, good. Good. I was hoping you were going to say that. And I just wanted to mention that, you know, we talk about the information from census and the 10%. That's true, that that's the number from there. We also know that it's really higher than that. We know that we have children in the school district that give us some indications that it's higher than that. And let's be really clear, and Jacob, you've said it twice and you and I've had conversations about this, we're the home of Mayo Clinic that has millions of people that come here with medical conditions, many of which make mobility in particular a difficulty for those people that live here. And I would hope that everyone at this table joins me in espousing for clearing the, you know, the limits and beyond so that we have a community where all those patients, as well as everyone that lives here, can get around, can enjoy the community and can get services at the city when they need them. That should be, I mean, in my mind, that's like, doesn't even really need much thought because that's who we are. So just wanted to throw that in, that we can look at those numbers, but we have to remember that we have visitors that come here every year that we're responsible for as well. So thanks, Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to wrap up, I am very appreciative to Councilmember Doring for asking about that succession planning and I think that was echoed by a few others here at the table. I look at especially the disability portion of the work that you've done so greatly over the last 18 months and we know that there needs to be a champion to continue that within the organization. And so I'm very, I will be looking to what we see next as far as how do we continue that great work that you've done for us? So, thanks.
Thank you.
And with that, we will move on to item A2, which is our compliance update on equity and development. And Edward Vora. Did I pronounce your name? Did I really screw it up?
council members. I am Edgar De Vera, a compliance specialist who is part of the diversity, equity and inclusion team. I am here with my teammates, Jamie Swank and Chow Mattela.
Who's controlling the PowerPoint here?
Hold on, hold on. Yeah, I'm okay. It's part of the, I am, I'm here to provide an update on the work that our office is doing in three key areas, which is prevailing wage compliance, targeted business utilization, And these updates reflect our ongoing efforts to improve consistency, efficiency and inclusivity across all city and DMC funded projects. So what does the targeted business program do for the Rochester community? The targeted business program creates meaningful opportunities for small and disadvantaged businesses to participate in city contracts. for small and disadvantaged businesses to participate in city contracts, ensuring that they get a fair share of public investment. It is a structured initiative designed to monitor and enforce compliance with targeted business and workforce utilization goals within the city of Rochester. This program plays a vital role in advancing diversity, equity, and economic inclusion in public infrastructure projects. By doing so, it helps ensure that city resources are distributed more equitably across the community. And why does prevailing wage matter? Prevailing wage laws ensure that workers on public construction projects are paid fair, competitive wages based on local standards. I would like to give you a more realistic perspective by comparing minimum wage, living wage, and prevailing wage. Minnesota's minimum wage is $11.13. The living wage is $22.05. The prevailing wage for a laborer on a road project is $61.32, which includes wages and benefits. This isn't just about pay, it's about quality. Prevailing wage helps attract skilled workers, keeps projects on schedule, and reinvests money back into our local economy. It's a smart investment in our workforce, our infrastructure, and our community. So prevailing wage is the minimum wage, minimum hourly compensation, including benefits paid to workers on federally, state, or locally funded construction projects. And workforce participation refers to involvement of workers, often from specific groups like women, minorities, or local residents in publicly funded construction projects. Targeted business refers to small, minority-owned, women-owned, or disadvantaged businesses that are specifically included in public contracting goals to promote equity and economic inclusion. In Minnesota, prevailing wage rates are established by the State Department of Labor and Industry through an annual survey process. Rates are specific for each county. These rates are then applied to state and locally funded construction projects. Davis Bacon rates, which are the federal rates used for federally funded projects, are similarly determined through an annual survey process. Prevailing wage is determined by funding source, federal, state, or local funds. The city of Rochester has adopted workforce participation goals to promote equity and inclusion on publicly funded construction projects. These goals focus on increasing representation of women and minorities in the construction workforce. The city goals are 9% women and 15% minorities. The actual participation achieved from the years 2020 to 2024 was 3.83% women and 18.21% minorities. While we have exceeded the minority workforce participation goal, we continue to fall short of the goal for women in the construction workforce. Our office is actively working on strategies to increase the utilization of women on city construction projects to meet and sustain these goals. Targeted Business Participation Summary from 2020 to 2024. From 2020 through June 2024, the city of Rochester invested a total of $128,751,981 in infrastructure projects. Of that amount, $8,717,967 was awarded to targeted businesses, resulting in a 6.8% utilization rate. These goals are part of the city's ongoing effort to ensure equitable contracting opportunities for underrepresented and disadvantaged business groups. The city accepts certifications from the following certification programs to verify eligibility for targeted business participation. The Central Certification Program, the Minnesota Unified Certification Program, and the Targeted Group Economically Disadvantaged Small Business Program. Per city council approval in November 2020, the dollar threshold for targeted business and workforce participation goals, as well as prevailing wage application on DMC-funded and CTCIP projects, have been decreasing. Starting in 2025, the targeted business goals are as follows. Heavy, civil, road, or horizontal construction is set at 4%. Commercial construction, building, or vertical construction is at 9%. So projects with targeted business contracting prevailing wage and workforce participation goals. Sorry about that. So the impact of the adopted goals, DMC adopted goals in 2019, and the city of Rochester adopted goals the following year. In the year 2019 to 2024, there was a 6.8% targeted business utilization. Currently, active projects have an 8.5% targeted business utilization. Projects with targeted business goals have been increasing. In 2021, there were eight projects that we monitored. And this year, we expect to monitor more than 60 projects. I wanted to discuss next the current process from pre-bid to project completion. Before a project is advertised for bid, a request that the implementing city department or DMC submit a wage determination form. I will explain the contents of this form later in the presentation. A packet is included in the bid documents, which provides a detailed description of the required forms to be submitted. During the bidding process, after the bid has been awarded, throughout project implementation, and upon project completion. Next, let me talk about the compliance software that we presently have. We are, the city is currently using LCP Tracker, which is its labor compliance software. This system monitors both prevailing wage compliance and workforce utilization compliance. Recently, thanks to city council approval, we are moving forward with the implementation of two new systems. The B2G Now system to monitor targeted business utilization compliance, and the E-comply system, which will replace LCP Tracker for labor compliance tracking. These two systems can be integrated, creating a more seamless and efficient process for compliance management. This integration will greatly support our targeted business utilization reporting and help us meet ongoing compliance requirements more effectively. We aim to simplify and optimize the compliance process, making the tasks associated with achieving compliance goals as efficient, streamlined, and seamless as possible. We have updated existing forms and introduced new ones used throughout the project lifecycle from pre-bid to project completion in order to simplify and optimize the compliance monitoring process. The forms have been condensed using clear, concise language and short, direct sentences to ensure better understanding. Information has been thoughtfully organized and grouped by category to make the forms easier to follow and complete. This is the pre-bid wage determination form that I talked earlier. Currently, the city does not have a clear and consistent process for determining prevailing wage applicability, or which prevailing wage rates apply to a project. There is also some inconsistency in the application of targeted business and workforce utilization goals. For example, I've seen targeted business goals for commercial or building projects set at 7% instead of the required 9%. And workforce participation goals for women listed as 7% instead of 9%. To promote consistency across departments and DMC, we introduced the pre-bid wage determination form. This form collects basic project details, such as the project description, funding amount, and funding source. Based on the information provided, we can determine whether prevailing wage requirements apply, identify whether state or federal prevailing wage rates are applicable, inform the city departments or DMC of the appropriate targeted business and workforce utilization goals for the project. This form helps ensure that compliance standards are applied consistently and accurately from the very beginning of each project. We have also streamlined the reporting requirements. Currently, monthly targeted business and workforce participation reports are required, which has proven to be burdensome for contractors, subcontractors, and project managers. These reports are typically prepared manually by contractors. And to address this, we have streamlined the reporting process. For contracts with a term of one year or less, reports will now be submitted at 50%, 80%, and 100%. For contracts with a term longer than one year, reports will be submitted on a quarterly basis with a final report at 100% completion.
If you can pull your paper just a little closer to you, then it's not going to hit the microphone.
Oh. Once the new B2G Now and E-comply systems are fully implemented, these reports will be generated through the software, significantly reducing manual work and saving valuable time for all stakeholders. We have also made an update and introduced the waiver form for the bid process. With this update in the bid process, we will allow bidders to submit partial or full waiver requests accompanied by documentation of good faith efforts if the targeted business goal is not met. Currently, a contract may still be awarded to the lowest and best bidder, even if the required targeted business goal outlined in the bid is not met. This update ensures that the commitment to minority business enterprise, women business enterprise, or disadvantaged business enterprise participation goals remain a top priority in the contracting process. By allowing requests for waivers or reductions only after determining that no bidder meeting those goal is also the lowest and best or most advantageous, the contracting authority reinforces that these goals are not optional or easily bypassed. It encourages bidders to make genuine good faith efforts to meet participation goals from the outset, rather than relying on the possibility of a waiver as a fallback. Furthermore, requiring complete documentation, questions 1 to 6, and thorough justification for each yes response ensures transparency, accountability, and fairness in the waiver review process. It also streamlines evaluation by preventing incomplete or unsupported requests from consuming administrative resources. We also respectfully request that the Honorable City Council consider for discussion allowing the city to award a contract to a bidder whose proposal is up to 10% higher than the lowest bid, if that bid meets the targeted business goal and the lower bid does not. Additionally, we ask the Honorable City Council to consider this proposal at a future meeting. We also request feedback on additional provisions for contractors who are awarded contracts do not meet the goals which they are committed to and are not able to demonstrate good faith efforts. We would also want to expand recognition of certifications. Currently, the city recognizes three out of six certifications programs in the state of Minnesota. We are recommending an expansion to recognize all valid certifications available within the state of Minnesota, which will add certifications for disabled person, BIPOC persons, and women. This broader recognition will give our contractors a wider pool of certified companies to choose from, supporting greater inclusion and improving access to opportunities for diverse businesses. That is the end of my presentation, and we will entertain questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you for very valuable information. And I'm sure a lot of my colleagues have questions regarding the targeted businesses' goals and waiver requests. So I'll start it off. So it sounds like we have, those that are submitting the RFPs or bid packages are not putting in the 9%, they'll put in the 7%. So I guess my question is, are we not, when we do put in 7% or 9% into a bid package, are we getting bidders that say we can't meet that goal? Is that what's happening right now?
Right now, Council President, a bidder can submit a bid without even meeting the goal that we set, the workforce utilization goal or the targeted business goal. So they can submit without any information given to the city as to why they're not meeting the goals. So that is why we are introducing this waiver form, so that these bidders, in case they don't meet the goal, will give us some information why they are not meeting the goals. And they need to show some good faith efforts that they actually exerted the effort to solicit participation from targeted businesses.
So just to clarify, so what you're recommending for us to consider is to put that 9% in and be clear across the board that all of our bids are asking for 9% targeted business goals? And then allowing the bidder to give us a waiver form to explain if they're not meeting that 9%? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, got it. Okay. Councilmembers, questions? Councilmember Keane?
Yeah, again, I appreciate seeing the detail here. This is more, right now, it seems like we've been running this for a while. So, and it's good to see the minority numbers up where, you know, where we had hoped. I projected, or I feel this is like a program we put in place because we had an issue and we're trying to resolve that issue by bringing more minority-owned and women-owned businesses into the thing. With that in mind, do you get to a point out in the future where you'd say, this is not working? We don't need these compliance things anymore? Or, and we've now helped establish these businesses and they're establish these businesses and they're part of the ecosystem, or is this something that you feel is into perpetuity?
We are, I think the minority goals, council member, are being met. We're short on the women.
Yep.
And we're working on it, and that is another reason why we recommend that some other certifications like the WeBank.
Yep.
Is made available.
My question's slightly different, though. I'm trying to say, if like, I'm picturing this in my old language, when we worked with equal opportunity and affirmative action was, affirmative action programs were there to help stimulate the marketplace so that it corrected, and then they stop, they go away. Is this something that will go away at some point, or do you feel this is needed because if it wasn't there, these minority businesses would no longer be getting the business?
I think.
I don't know, if you want to?
Yeah, Councilmember Keen, I think I can help in responding to that question. I think you're asking, is there an endpoint where we say we've done an adequate amount?
Actually, just to make sure we're communicating, no, I, in my view, we identified a problem and we tried to create some programs to help get rid of that problem. I wouldn't say that we've done enough and we're going away, I would say the market is corrected, and the, and the businesses we wanted to see represented are now in the business.
So I would answer by saying that I don't know that there's a clear-cut answer to that, because our hope is that as we continue to include disadvantaged business enterprises in the ecosystem, we will also be growing and certifying additional businesses within that scope. And so as those businesses increase, then obviously we will continue to want to meet that goal. But at this time, we set that goal based on availability, right? What is available within our ecosystem? And so as that availability increases, that might also continue to change. But the aspiration is, we would meet the threshold that we have set at this point.
And again, this is more of a policy question. Is this a program to help fix those problems we discovered and then step back, or is this the way we're going to do business into the future? And I, maybe I don't need an answer here today, I just want to say, that's how I'm thinking about them, and I want to communicate that.
I would say, short-term, the idea was to impact the disparity that was evident. Yes.
Councilmember Palmer. I think what Mr. Keen's asking is, is when is, when is it successful? When do you say we've achieved our goal and we're there? I guess that's where my thought process was on that question. My question, I only have one, is living wage of twenty-two oh five, where does that number come from?
We got that, council member, from the state of Minnesota. That's the living wage that they set for this year.
Okay, I've never heard that, so thank you. Other questions, council members? I guess I'm looking for a little bit more clarity to, and it speaks to Councilmember Keen's question. In looking at the numbers, it looks like we are in a good place with the minority businesses, but not the women. But I, I want to have a better handle on how difficult is it when we put together our bid packages to meet those goals? Are we having difficulty? Is that why we're suggesting going to the next nearest from the lowest bid?
Council President, I would answer this way. We set the goals with the intention, obviously, of impacting the disparity that we see in our infrastructure projects, but we currently follow state standard, which is a low bid standard, so we go with the lowest bidder. But what has ended up happening is, very, quite a number of times, we will have prime contractors that have bid on a project that might come up to five or ten percent of the lowest one, and they're meeting the targeted business goals and making an effort to include as many targeted businesses as possible, but they might lose out on that bid because their bid is just slightly higher than the lowest bid. And so this is an effort to see what we can do to correct that, because we're maybe causing a little bit of frustration within that system for prime contractors, say we're making this effort to ensure that we are partnering with targeted businesses, but then we still don't meet the bid because we happen not to be the lowest bidder on this RFP. And on the other hand, we made a commitment as a city to say this is something that we would like to do, to ensure that we're setting those goals, but we didn't set in place any parameters that would allow us to continuously ensure that we are kind of validating the prime contractors and the efforts that are being made by those who are trying to meet those targeted business goals.
Thank you. Any other feedback? Councilmember Doring.
Thank you so much for all the information. Is there an accountability standard for a developer who bids on a project who says that they are going to include and meet our goals but then don't throughout the course of the project, or do we just say, ah, okay, whatever?
There are, there's nothing, actually. That's why we're recommending, you know, this is a policy decision for council to make, and probably we can set some sort of administrative penalties in the future, you know, of course, upon approval of council.
Seeing no other feedback, I guess what I would say, and kind of in line with Council Member Doring's inquiry, is, I guess I would like to see a little bit more information on the bid packages and what kind of trends there are, and are those lowest bids coming in with out? How much are they coming in not meeting those goals?
I do not have that information, Council President, but I have seen bids, the lowest and the most advantageous to the city, that are not meeting the goals but are still being awarded to those low bids.
Okay.
I guess, if I may, Council President, I've kind of heard that question differently. Like, in the future, I would like to see more information, maybe it wasn't what your question was, but I heard that is that you would like us to come back with a little bit more information about that specific recommendation, and to better understand, you know, ten percent's a potentially a large number, depending on the cost of the project, and, like, I guess the thing I'm thinking is, are we talking about if you meet one percent versus nine percent, are you eligible for the full ten percent, or how would you build out a program, something like that, that is an incentive that doesn't arbitrarily, you know, accidentally incentivize people to try to meet the targeted business goal in order to bid higher on a project, rather that we're really building a system that's trying to incentivize the access to targeted businesses, and there's a lot of different thoughts on that, probably, about what might work best, but it's, I'm hearing you say you would like to have more information before you're asked about that.
That is exactly the line, and you are like four steps ahead of me on it, so thank you. So with that, Mayor Norton, go ahead.
I have a quick question. So, are we tracking, if we have businesses that come in and say they're going to reach a certain amount, and don't reach that certain amount again and again and again, but keep given, being given the contracts because they're low bid, do we know who those individual, and I'm not asking for names here, I'm just looking at a concept here, if they're never meeting the goal, but there's someone else, to your point, that's just maybe really close to the same, that says they can meet the goal, and maybe have experience and history meeting the goal, do we know that? Are we tracking that? Either chow or?
Yeah, Mayor Norton, thank you for your question. That is information that we do have, and I think we can put together and share that back with the council, just for your review, to say, in the last year or two, what bids have been submitted that met the goal versus not, which ones were low bid, who maybe didn't get awarded the bid even though the difference in their bid was slightly higher but met the goal.
Okay, that would be helpful, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Devera. And are we ready to move on, or do folks want a break? I don't see a break. We will move to the Rochester Public Library Master Plan Study, and our presenter, I see Karen coming up, and Tracy, and so take it away.
Yes, I'm here to do the formalities. Thank you, Council President Schubring, Mayor Norton, members of the council, administrators Elms. We also have some library board members that are here, hearing this presentation for the second time. We are intentionally bringing this back to you before it is in its final form, so our intent today is to get feedback from you, the council, and do this more jointly as library board and council. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tracy and Holly to introduce themselves and tell you all about their draft recommendations.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President, Mayor, Administrator, council members. We're delighted to be here to share our progress update. Thank you, Karen, for underscoring draft. Okay, here we are. I am Tracy Lesnesky. It's spelled a little bit weird on that slide, it's actually Lesnesky. I'm with MSR Design, I'm the president and CEO of that architecture and interior design firm from Minneapolis. I represent the master plan lead for this team. There's scores of people working together on this effort to make sure that we represent all the different lenses and disciplines that would inform a sound master plan. Susan Kent, who is in the middle there, was unable to join us because she would have needed to be via Zoom. Maybe when you have your revised room, that will be possible in the future. And then Holly Yokum is with us here from Pathway Group.
Good afternoon, council members. Excited to be here. I rep, I'm a partner with the Pathway Group, based out of Salt Lake City, Utah. An exciting part of this project for me is that prior to being with the Pathway Group, I was the Director of Community Services for Salt Lake County, where I served as nine years, and a big part of my work was the overseeing the operations of the Salt Lake County Library System, which had twenty-two libraries in our system in the biggest county in the state, as well as a lot of history with other operations in government, Parks and Rec, Arts and Culture, so a lot of the things we'll talk about today draws on that experience over that time.
And your name is the only one spelled correctly on the slide.
Which never happens, so I'm really excited about that.
I'll let you know, in our packets, your names are all spelled correctly.
That's good to hear, thank you. And I wonder if the closed captions could be moved to the top right of the slide each time, because I think that's probably going to be the least amount of conflict on each of the slides going forward. I want to make sure that folks see the bottom as well of this slide, which shows the rest of the groups that are involved in the effort. You'll notice that in, for instance, Kraus Anderson will be involved to do some cost estimating, Susan Kent will be providing some operational estimating. This will all happen later in this process. Going to go to next slide here. Today, what we'd like to do is to share a brief update with you, share the preliminary draft draft recommendations that are resulting from what we've learned to date, and then invite your input to help shape the next few months of work. We have another community survey coming up, and we have another co-design process coming up, and we'd like to use your input to shape the questions that we ask during those efforts. Our objectives are, in short, to provide a sound master plan that will guide the library in achieving its mission for the years to come. That result will have much stakeholder input and be founded in what the community itself asks for and needs in order to thrive in the 21st century. So that's what we're starting with as our foundation. You can see this is a long process, it's a year, we're about two-thirds of the way through. So where we are today is in the create phase, which is taking an initial draft of these recommendations, as we're starting to see some themes arise, test them with stakeholder groups such as yours, and then finish the work by putting some meat on the bones. So there's not a lot of detail today to share, it's pretty high-level themes that we're going to talk with you about and then hear your feedback. We've already learned some pretty key findings, and that's part of what's shaped the themes so far. One is that the staff of the Rochester Public Library is highly valued and its services are well-used. There is an opportunity, however, to reach more people in the community. There's not a huge percentage of cardholders at this time, there are high visits, but it has a lot of opportunity to reach more people by providing more robust services, more robust programming, not necessarily an expansion, if you will, but an reallocation, perhaps, to provide a more calibrated delivery of services. Many council, or many community members would benefit from and have stated that they would use what we term 21st century library service offerings, we'll define that in a little moment here for you. We've learned through many different various inputs that the downtown location does present a bit of a barrier for many people in using the library's services, we'll talk about that more in a moment. And there has been a recurring theme about having more locations available for people to access the services, so again, we'll talk about these things in more detail. Our recommendations will be bucketed into these four categories. Today, we'll share drafts, eventually we'll have more filled-out versions of these, but they'll still probably stay in these four categories: identity, operations, leadership, and facilities. Identity, high level, we're going to look at how to raise the library's profile in the community. For operations, we want to align the operations better with the future needs of this community. For leadership, we want to provide recommendations around a culture of innovation and create better alignment with what the city and the county are striving to achieve in this community. And then we want to learn a little bit more about what dispersing library services looks like for this community, and we do think that there is a valuable asset in the downtown location that could be renovated to attract more use, and so we'll talk about that as we go on. As I mentioned, underpinning this entire set of draft recommendations to date is a robust reach into the community. We wanted to start with understanding what the community's needs, aspirations, and desires are, and calibrate the service offerings accordingly. We have conducted many outreach activities already, we have received 283 responses through our first survey, we've held visioning sessions with stakeholders, one-on-one key interviews with key stakeholders, and then the co-design process that the city and DMC have advocated for was also used, not as part of our process, but as a separate contracted process, to augment the community outreach that we've done as part of our own process. So you have the report from that effort in your packet as well. A through line from the community input is that the library is well-loved, and there's a lot of really lovely sentiments here on the screen from your community members. We have looked also at demographics, we want to understand what the changes are that are coming to your community and region. These are just two examples of changes in age and race coming your way. We've also looked, of course, at major developments and things that are going to be changing the way people use your community, think about your community, interact in and engage in your community. We've, of course, looked at the city of Rochester's vision statement and principles, as well as Mayor's Vision 2050, noticing the similar themes between those two efforts, as well as the land use plan for the county, and just, again, wanting to make sure that we collect and understand as much as we can about where you are now and where you're headed in the future, so that we're calibrating a master plan for the library that can meet the demands. We've also looked at what the local and regional and national context for libraries is. I have the great fortune of visiting libraries all across our country, and actually in the world, in the work that I do, and have a good pulse on what's happening out there and in libraries, and what I can say with certainty is that they are changing, and they continue to change. Whereas once libraries were quiet places, maybe one sole space that you could access them with some pretty fixed offerings, libraries are much more now active and vibrant. They do still have books, they will have books for the long time to come. Those books will continue to be in print and digital, even as digital continues to rise. They are community hubs, they are places where people can meet for social reasons, for learning reasons, for connection, for enhancing their well-being, to get resources to learn job skills and trades. They're places that people can access the technologies and things that they don't have access to in other aspects of their lives. So as I was saying, they are very different kinds of places than they used to be. They are for all ages, not just for kids, and many of our most vibrant communities really have embraced the idea that the library can be central to a very connected and robust and vibrant community. There are some trends happening as well with libraries, and one is that, one of the reasons we do all of this robust engagement and understanding of what the community needs is because they're hyper-local. There aren't any standards anymore for what a library should be. It really is, what should Rochester's library be for Rochester? It really is, what should Rochester's library be for Rochester? And we need to reach to all of you who understand Rochester best to know what that is and what that means. We know that because everything is changing quickly in our world, and therefore, library services need to continue to change and evolve, that adaptability is critical. So staff need to be able to adapt, and they need facilities and spaces that can adapt with them. As I mentioned, digital is on the rise, but we don't ever see print going away. And because more and more is demanded of libraries in terms of how they provide services to their communities, partnerships are critical. Partnerships are key. So we're seeing a lot more of both co-located partners with libraries, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as well, and simply more innovative programming together. A lot of your service providers in your community, they're all serving the same people, right? We don't want to duplicate services, but we do want to augment services and make sure we're providing the best that we can for your community. So some opportunities that we see.
So first is thinking about embracing physical and digital resources, programs, and services. So thinking about how are people using the library today? And how can they use the digital collections, be responsive to customer needs and demands, and then offer resources to allow people to create and share content? When I first started working with libraries, I was on a library board. Then I oversaw the libraries, and now I have an eight-year-old daughter. We access the library in a different way. So looking at how is the next generation, as the community grows, using library and their services? Also, position the library as a hub for lifelong learning. Provide flexible and sustainable spaces for the community to gather, interact, and collaborate. What we used to think as we go to a library and read a book is no longer the case, and people learn in different ways. And so how can the library continue to be that point to help people learn, whether it's being interactive, whether it's media, people, and then spaces? As you all know, we all do our jobs differently in this day and age. The world has changed, and libraries are changing. So how can we become an active node for residents in their daily lives in which they can connect and gather together? To spark innovation and entrepreneurship, we are seeing more and more that buildings are opportunities for people to come together, to create learning, to create businesses together, and to create different ways to educate and to move forward their interest in the community. We also look at supporting businesses and career success. People are using libraries as a hub to access information that they wouldn't be able to access in the past, and to grow and to collaborate with one another in those spaces. And then to provide flexible, sustainable, physical spaces for community interaction, collaboration, and then also to access your collections that you have, and to create maker spaces. So over and over, we're seeing, as you can see through some of these pictures provided by MSR, the people are using libraries in a different way. But they're still learning, they're still growing, and they're still serving the community. Also, serve as a key role as a collaborator in your social service network. While I understand that you may be able to access services at one place, that doesn't mean that everybody feels comfortable in accessing those services in that place. And so how can you be a welcoming environment and allow some services to come in the library? And we'll talk about that as we go a little further on, how libraries are changing and making communities, government, more accessible to the community, as well as other social service networks and opportunities. We also, again, be a critical contributor to your region. We know that the county has goals and the city has goals. And how can the library really help you as council members, you as leaders from the city administration and the mayor's office? How can you move forward your community? And the library, as we've seen throughout the country, and I would say on the international level, libraries are a hub for that, really in helping access communities and move initiatives, move communities, move gathering spaces, and learning forward. So I'll turn it over to Tracy to talk about the challenges.
Okay, so we also, through our process to date, have uncovered a few challenges, some headwinds in the way of the library achieving their mission to its fullest extent. One is just the downtown realities. So there are some challenges for some of your community members to being downtown, whether it's transportation to access downtown, parking once they're there, or even once they've parked, which is a very nice connected parking garage to the library, traversing the trail to get to the front door and finding their way. It is a bit of a barrier for some of your community members, and we heard that often. Couple that, then, with the reality that there's going to be a lot of construction over the next several years, just exacerbating that issue for your library customers. There's a bit of misalignment about what is the future of the library here between the city leadership, the library, and all of you. We'd like to understand that a little bit more. How can we make sure that things are aligned, and we're all going in the right same direction together? There is a general lack of awareness about what the library already does for its community members. What are the program services and offerings? And a lot of people weren't aware of everything that's going on. So that's a kind of an easy, low-hanging fruit, actually, to market better, perhaps, what is happening in the library, so more people take advantage. There's some untapped philanthropic awareness and support from the community, which Holly will talk about in more detail. And then there's also a pretty prevalent ethos of wanting to use the services within one's own pocket of the community and not really branch out too far beyond that. And so we think about that a lot as we think about what the right plan is for the library, and how do we overcome something that may not be overcomable, and instead pivot and figure out a different way to deliver those services. So that all led us to ask the very big question when we think about all that you have going on for your community and all of the exciting developments that are happening and your big aspirations for being vibrant and for being an energetic and innovative place, how can the library be in lockstep in that vision? And how can the library also be perceived as an energetic, innovative place? That is what we'd like to think about next. So that's what we call the big question. And again, you'll see we're underscoring draft recommendations in these four buckets. And we'll start with identity.
Sure. So first is thinking about how do you raise the library's profile in the community? So this is increasing outreach efforts to various diverse communities. We heard over and over that there is a barrier with the library services. So how can you continue sort of to increase those efforts? And look at that. Utilizing multiple communication tools and outlets to inform the public. So rethinking maybe of campaigns that are bringing awareness to what the library does, to the services that they offer. And then thinking about strong partnerships for collaboration and cooperation. And a big part of the collaboration and cooperation on services is thinking about, you don't have to do it all as the city, right? There are organizations, whether there's nonprofits, whether there's other entities throughout the county, the school district, but how can you bring those together? So you're offering those services to the community and bringing them together without costing, bringing more sort of impact to your budget? So what does the community want? What does it need? And are there other people that you can bring to the library to provide those services? Looking at raising the profile with the city and county leadership. So I'm thinking about the work that you've laid out in your strategic plan with the city and the county, and how the library can be a tool for you to sort of move that forward. And we'll talk about some examples of that. We also think that sometimes, you know, saying 21st century library may not mean anything to anyone in this room, you know, or, you know, throughout the city. But as we think about, you know, often we're taking on tours as leaders, whether it's council members, whether it's staff, to say, maybe we need to go tour some other libraries. And we think that's such a great opportunity, is, you know, perhaps when some of your leadership are touring with, you know, whether it's the Association of Counties, the Association of Cities, different opportunities with the Downtown Alliance in your community, looking at, how can you look at other libraries to say, what are we seeing in our peer cities? And how can we bring some of that to our community to move our community forward? And so we think doing a trip like that would be really influential for all of you to start thinking about how are libraries in other cities, not only bringing library services forward, but other services in the community and making that connection? And we'll talk a little bit as we go and give some examples of things that we're seeing across the country. And then thinking about, you know, whether it's goals of homeless issues in your community, whether it's goals of sort of meeting the needs. I think of some of the presentations tonight. How can you use the library? Because most people feel comfortable in a library. That's a setting where people can walk in and feel like they belong, feel like they can learn, and feel like they're there to access information. So how can we take the goals of the city and use the library as a tool to move that forward? And we have some ideas that we'll talk about throughout this presentation. But really, starting with raising the identity of, as a collaborative partner with the city and the county. Did I go? Okay, yep, sorry. Next is thinking about positioning library staff as integral partners with the city initiatives. I think of, you know, some people are looking at, whether it's early education, whether it's reading by the, you know, the age of three, you know, how many words have kids heard? There's so many opportunities to think about the goals of your health department, of your Parks and Recreation team, to say, how can we collaborate and bring these entities together and move forward within engaging city initiatives? And the library, we think, is key to being able to do that. You know, we've seen in some cities where the mayor's office does a library book club, where the community comes together and they read books with the mayor together. Or council members come to Storytime and help work with, you know, the different patrons and meet their community members where they are. And we'd love to talk about, how can you use the library as a hub to move forward your initiatives in the city? Next is strengthening the library foundation. Oftentimes, as we look at budgeting woes in our communities and we look forward, we see the library foundation as an opportunity to help bring more community support. So it's not just those tax dollars, but it's that philanthropic giving. And I've had the opportunity to meet with your library foundation, and they are, I say this as I'm looking at some of them, you know, they're energetic to move the library forward. They're already doing this work. And so how can we bring together that philanthropic community to support some of these new initiatives in your community? And I think there's a lot of, not only sort of support from the foundation, but also I think you do have a community that if we were able to tap into that community and elevate the library with all of you, I think you could see more money come in to help with some of these initiatives without having to tax the library or tax your constituents. And we'll look at some of that as part of this practice as we come out with our final recommendations, is looking at funding for some of these initiatives. Next is enhancing the fundraising effectiveness. So teaching your library staff, foundation, and board how to think about giving, how to think about accessing philanthropic dollars in the community, and aligning with the friends, the foundation, and the library's mission to move the library forward. So library operations. We think there's an opportunity to look at your collections management and come up with a strategy for the future as you continue to grow, and looking at how your patrons are using your current library collection. We think there's a big opportunity to review and update your job classifications. And this doesn't mean, you know, saying, I'm asking you to give everyone a raise in the library department, but we've looked at your job descriptions, and we think that libraries are changing, and the job descriptions should probably change to align with that work. Aligning annual budget with services and collections, we think there's an opportunity to look at how funds are being spent now, and then think about the future. You know, you'll see in some of the documentations, digital access to digital learning is expensive. And so really thinking about, how is the dollars being spent now, and then looking to the future? And then review and improve technology. As we all know, technology is expensive and changing every day. And we think that there's opportunities within the library system to look at your current technology, to upgrade that, but also look at how people use technology in the library and how you can better serve your residents. You know, I joke all the time. My daughter is eight and knows how to use my phone better than I do, and she doesn't even have a phone, so I don't understand it. But how can the library be that hub to support people like me who are struggling to use technology, but also continue to increase the learning of individuals in our community? And then review and improve as needed the programming for all ages. We know that libraries are a hub for families to come together, whether it's, sorry, for families to come together, for students to come together, and for people to gather and educate themselves. And so how do we continue to support the programming that your community desires? And we heard through our listening sessions that they're asking for. And so that's some of the work that we'll think of with your library staff.
Oh, I thought I did, yeah.
Oh, there, sorry. I didn't, I thought I missed something. So one thing on leadership is to think about a cultivation of innovation and transformation. So we think that there's a great opportunity to help your staff at the library move forward. And what I say that is, how do they continue? You know, as people are wanting new information, as people are wanting to learn in different ways, if our staff aren't educated on those things, then the library can't provide those services. And so we think there's a great opportunity to develop strong leaders within your staff. And some of this is providing them with public policy and processes to effectively advance organizational outcomes. So not only, you know, internally, but also externally in the community. Communications training to develop tailored messaging and persuasive communication techniques for engaging with community members and leaders in the community, and to talk about the services that they're offering. And then to promote a culture of strong external relationships that enhance the mission of the RFP. And when I say that, you know, often people think of, we used to have a rec center here, and we used to have a library here, and people didn't cross over. And I think more and more, our community is looking for those crossover opportunities. And we'll show some examples of that in a minute. But also, a lot of this is, how to think about? How to think out of the box and use services that you already have to bring to the community, whether that's partnerships at the, you know, Storytimes in the park, piano lessons at the library with nonprofits that offer those services. There are so many different things that are happening in your community. And so how does the library, you know, work with the library staff to think outside of a box and to move forward opportunities for people to engage and learn in these libraries? And but doing that, again, without hitting the budget of saying, we need more staff to offer services, but to say, we have a great Parks and Rec department. I've toured many times your city and surrounding areas with Parks and Recreation. So how do we bring those two amenities together and help those families and those individuals who are using our services access multiple different things that are happening in the community? And so we think developing strong leaders and developing the staff and giving them opportunities for growth would really be helpful, not only to the library, but to the future of the city.
Okay, so moving to facilities. We've got a few key recommendations regarding facilities. We hear over and over about the parking issues, whether they're real or perceived in some cases. There is, you know, some free hours of parking. We know this. Not everybody does know that. We also know that people would stay longer if there were longer hours of free parking. So many cities like yours would investigate validated parking, or at least test that as an idea, and see if people do stay longer, or people do come more often. That could be another partnership with the foundation, perhaps, to expand free parking or a pilot program of it. We think that there's an opportunity there to at least test whether that would make a difference or not to your community members. I mentioned before dispersing services throughout the city, piloting a satellite or two or more in growth zones. We know that since this building was built, I'm pointing, I don't know if I'm pointing in the right direction, that when this building was built, a lot of growth has happened in the north and south of your city, and there aren't really library services there. So targeting large growth zones, anticipated growth zones, finding vacant property or partners that would be willing to house a satellite program for a while and see what happens. It's a relatively low barrier to entry to find out a lot more about how your community would access library services and if it would expand access for your community, which we think it would. We have on here something that might be provocative, which is exploring a model of a smaller downtown footprint. I know that goes against many other studies you've done in the past that would argue for a larger downtown footprint. The reason for this is because of what we've learned about the headwinds of being downtown. And perhaps, a smaller downtown footprint with more satellite locations would be the better option for Rochester. As I mentioned, it's all about what's right for your community. There is not one size fits all in terms of a model for delivering library services. And then there was a call for expanding bookmobile coverage. Your bookmobile is highly popular and really well-used. So there's an opportunity to reach more folks through an expanded set of hours or locations. Because satellite locations might not, or piloting them might not be an idea that you've come across before, we did include a few examples of successful pilot programs. One is in Maryland in Anne Arundel County. They took the approach of providing a full service, very small, 3,000-square-foot branch, essentially, in a mall. A lot of our malls across the country have some vacant space. They might benefit from additional foot traffic by having an amenity like a library within them. Some cities are able to strike really good deals with those malls to get that space either for very reduced or low-cost. to get that space either for very reduced or low cost or a free cost, especially for a testing of a pilot program such as this. A little different take is in Dallas where they said, we need a children's branch specifically. So rather than serving all ages, this is geared toward children and their families or caregivers. And so similarly, small footprint in a mall. Many of, many communities across the country, and you can see a few listed here and shown here on this slide, have experimented with having a footprint in their airports. You have many, many visitors coming to your airport every day. This would be a way to introduce library services to your visitors or to your, the regulars who fly in and out of here on their regular business. Colocation is gaining steam in libraries with like-minded partners or mission-aligned partners cohabitating, if you will, under one roof. An example of this kind of on steroids would be the Missoula Public Library that has a science museum that's part of the university, a family counseling unit, the local cable access television studio and all of the resources that that comes with for audio and visual production, a cafe and a science-based, grant-funded lab, all co-located with the library. The reason being what Holly was talking about, disintegrated services catching people where they are in a place that's comfortable to them and providing a one-stop shop of sorts. Housing also rose to the top of needs when we asked the community, what do you need here to thrive? A lot of communities are comparing, not comparing, pairing housing and library. So Milwaukee, not so far from here, easy to go and visit and see how that's working. A couple of different branch libraries associated with housing developments. Chicago has some examples of that as well. And then City Hall with library or Rec Center with library, as Holly was saying. Another example of how libraries are cohabitating to make the best use of the taxpayer dollar, bring services together that people often want to use together. You know, when you think of a whole family spending an afternoon together, they could be doing multiple things in one location. And that's what the idea of the Rec Center and library brings. And then the final slide of our draft recommendations regarding facilities is an opportunity to renovate the downtown library, both for accessibility and welcomeness and to utilize the existing square footage better. We think that there's actually enough square footage there if it's reallocated a little better and planned a little more efficiency, efficiently. So that, that would be our recommendation. We would want to reallocate some spaces that could be better used for the public. We would want to increase the number of small meeting spaces. There's a high demand for those for telehealth, for Zoom calls, for small meetings, for study groups. That we, all kinds of reasons given for why small meeting spaces would be useful. Curbside pickup, which was used during the pandemic, was highly popular and highly used given the parking concerns and, and comments that we heard about coming downtown. Perhaps curbside pickup is a service that could be reinstated to alleviate those concerns. Again, that could be a pilot project. That could be something that you try for six months and see, is it actually increasing accessibility or not? And then improved wayfinding, multiple languages perhaps, as been mentioned earlier in your study session. Certainly better visibility of signage, better wayfinding in general. You know, collection naming that is more plain language, not library speak that many people don't find accessible. And that brings us to the end of our draft and just real quickly wanted to share what our next steps are so you have context of where we're headed next. We will have another round of community input. There will be a community survey. We would like the questions to be informed by some of the questions that you have today for us. And then there will be another round of co-design sessions being facilitated by the partner group. By Design is the name of that company. We will finalize the report then. Once we have collected that final round of input, we will fine-tune our recommendations. Some of them may change, some may fall away, some new ones may arise. We don't know until we get into this work for the next couple of months. We'll add specificity, so there'll be very specific actions that we're recommending. We will identify costs associated with what we, what we recommend. And that's operational cost and capital cost both. We will also identify a way to achieve those things. That's a big part of Holly's role here is to identify pathways to funding, strategies that she sees in her assessment that could be possibilities for, for achieving these recommendations. And then we'll map that to a suggested timeline. And any master plan, of course, needs to pivot. We don't know what's coming in the next several years, but we do our best to lay out something that is achievable and actionable for the library. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you both. Questions, council members? Council member Wall?
Very interesting presentation and libraries have changed so much in my time. I actually worked in a college library when digital referred to toes and fingers. During eight years of education, spent all kinds of time in stacks because of, that's where you could find information. We didn't have the internet. Now, working professionally for a few decades, it seems like most of my information gathering would come through the internet rather than in a physical space. My wife has a library degree and worked professionally as a librarian. So I, you know, I love libraries. They have just changed so much. And you have described some of that. It, it seems like almost information gathering is, is no longer a key. Well, it's an asset. What should I say? It's, it's, it's not the prime mover of libraries anymore, yes?
I would agree that probably that's true. Karen would probably speak to this much more eloquently than we can. Content creation, information sharing, collaboration, the, the skills that we need to thrive in the 21st century, learning critical thinking skills and investigative efforts. That would be more, I think, what libraries are for. You still get information, of course, always will. Maybe just not in the same single purpose way that you're describing.
Yeah, I, I just return the poet back to the library digitally. So I do enjoy that service immensely. And some, something that I just have to wrap my head around in the term, in, in the way of the difference of how libraries are used these days, just enormous. And I just want to underscore, it was a question, but I'm sure you answered it in the last five minutes. Each of your draft recommendations will come with specific cost considerations. Thank you.
That's correct.
Council member Fredericks?
Thank you, President Schubring. You're speaking my language when you start talking about most efficient use of current space. I, I like that. Obviously makes sense to me, the way my brain works. The parking issue, the duration of that seems like a simple fix, like we could go to a two-hour duration and just see if that increases usability. I think that seems like a simple fix, a logical fix. One thing, one thing that wasn't brought up in this that just the light bulb came on for me. I personally know well over 100 people each year that have to do a, a match interview on Zoom. And having a room that they could sit down and do all those interviews in would be really beneficial to several people every year in this community. I happen to own a building right by the library and the tenants there would really enjoy that because when they're trying to be most professional and if they're in a building where they can't control their surroundings so much, it can get loud, this, that, and everything can be going on and they're, you know, they're quite nervous and they really want it to work out for themselves. So something like that would be very beneficial to a lot of people. It goes on for months to, they, they do several interviews. So one person can, I, I'd be guessing if I, I said how many interviews they do, but they do several. So that could be a big thing. Thanks for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Council member Miller?
Yeah, thanks so much for the presentation here. I guess my question really first and foremost is about parking and access to the library. What I don't hear in the presentation is a consideration of the Bus Rapid Transit line and how we are moving mode shift patterns. The library will have a transit stop right in front of it when that project is complete, giving much more access to people along that route. And we'll expand the potential parking spaces, particularly the free parking spaces that someone could then shift to a high-frequency transit line and end up right at the library with no consideration of how long that time is. So I just highlight that because that is a transformative transformation, transportation project in the downtown that will ideally shift how people are accessing and the convenience of accessing downtown because parking does have a cost. And I'm looking forward to hearing that cost because that is, you know, a subsidy that the city could, would have to consider for how we're giving access to the library. And I, I wonder, in that vein, in other cities that are piloting expanded parking validation or others, are those programs income limited or otherwise qualified or is that open to anyone?
Yeah, so I could say they've been open to anyone when they've done them. And we're looking at more and more pilot programs because people are seeing parking as a barrier. You know, I always joke around, I live in a city that has more parking per capita, but the number one complaint at the city is there's nowhere to park, as you can imagine. And literally it's been studied. So it's all, parking just is sometimes, I mean, I always say it's the elephant in the room, but they haven't done it income-based. It's usually like, it's been open to all.
Thank you. And I, I think the missing component in the, the parking conversation is the expectation that it's free, right? Because it, it's free to the user, but it is paid somewhere because facility, construction cost, allocating that space can't be used for other things. So I appreciate that conversation. And I, I also thought it was very interesting in the mall conversation because if there is a place that built for ample free parking all times of day, our malls, and so it's interesting to consider how we might innovate in that space. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing more about that. And then finally, I guess in the innovation, I, I didn't see, I actually was in Salt Lake City a couple of weeks ago and had the chance to visit the downtown library. And what I noticed there that just struck me as interesting were small retail spaces that were built into the building that could be used by community partners. And another element, and just in the broader downtown, is I often hear that there are not starter retail spaces. Commercial spaces are very large and expensive. And so creating those micro footprints also seems like an innovative idea. I'd love to hear more about and if, if that perhaps is viable in the space.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council member Keen?
Yeah, this has been interesting for me today. One of the reasons it's interesting though is I, I consider this a huge shift when you start talking about, yes, we're now hearing that the big, like, well-integrated downtown single library isn't the way to go and branches are a better way to go. And can, maybe we should clarify, are you talking about branches? Or are you talking about just distributed resources? That kind of from a, you men, you mentioned early on that this was like a master plan, but I didn't know what the constraints were, whether this was additive or, or you mentioned aspirational. But I think if a real master plan really does trade-offs and says, but is there a major trade-off? That, I mean, I know you're not there yet, but I feel like there's a movement away from the large, like, like really well-funded and stocked, you know, multi-language, all this other sort of stuff. I don't think you get that when you go to a branch. And I, I guess I'd like to see if you'd say like, no, we're going to have the same services just distributed. And I, I, I guess I'm, I'm communicating that I'm a little surprised that from what I've been hearing, it's, this is a major shift.
Okay, thank you. I would say it is early to know exactly what we're going to recommend. Distributed services is a clear trend though. So how they're distributed is yet to be seen, I think. I, I hope I said at the beginning, I meant to, if I didn't, that we're after what is going to be achievable and realistic and also as aspirational as we can be. We want to position the community to thrive. We want to position the library in a key role in helping the community thrive. And so far, what that means is distributed services so that they are accessible in more locations of the city than just downtown. Exactly how that looks, I'm not sure yet. I think satellites, I'll call them satellites because that suggests maybe a little different kind of footprint or operational lift, if you will, might be a good, a good solution here. But we do need to hear a little bit more input from folks and we do want to understand what's on your minds too. Before we can make that.
I would just also say, so we're not saying that the downtown library goes away, right? So you still have your, your main branch is what we would call it downtown. But then it's providing additional services. We did hear from people, you know, I have kids, it's hard to get downtown and to take them downtown. I'd love a library closer to me in my neighborhood. And we're seeing that across the country. People want to access, you know, services within, you know, the, you know, I would say the comfort of their neighborhoods. And so that's where the satellite branch comes in, is to try it and see, how is this, you know, what services can we provide within those neighborhoods and what's most important to those individuals?
No, no, I, I heard that. It's just usually those services in the neighbors are dramatically less than what you get, what you're able to provide in the downtown, dramatically less.
It can be a subset of, like we were showing, and, and maybe that's right for one part of your community. It could be a smaller set of everything that's provided, just in a bite-sized piece. We don't know yet what that recommendation will be. I would say too, Holly was mentioning, families find it difficult sometimes to, to park and get to the front door. Also, people with mobility issues have issues getting to that front. That's a long walk from the parking garage. It's not an easy one necessarily. So there's a lot of great reasons why having more locations that are more convenient to where people are living is helpful.
Okay. And I appreciate, like, when I picture the timeline you have in front of us here, that idea of like, try to get this input now. But I think if you started communicating with the idea, not just that satellites, because that looks like a net add, but if there really are trade-offs here, I'd want those right now that are the users would, have to understand that. Because I understand there's like major, like different international languages, collections. And when I start thinking of, when I think of even spoken hub, I don't think of them having that level of like depth. So if there's trade-offs, we want to make sure they're communicated before we start making.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And I have council member Palmer and the mayor, but I just wanted to kind of follow up on council member Keen's line. And I, I'm wondering if like the satellites and kind of co, co-locations, are they, can they be viewed as like a stationary bookmobile? So that, you know, it's not additive, but that they, they know their community, they can move resources around to the different places? That I think would be a real dynamic.
Yeah, I would say that's a big part of the satellite, right? Is they're still able to access the collection in their neighborhood, you know, they're able to get those books there. They have storytime. They have, I would say, individual places. I, you know, anywhere I go, I use the library when I have meetings that I have to do. If I don't, you know, if I'm traveling, I go to the library to do those things. So they would have those things there that are just, you know, whether, whatever neighborhood that is, that they're able to access the same. I would say similar services and sometimes more because it's, you know, right there in their neighborhood.
Could I just quickly clarify that though? If you're talking about financially additive, it would be financially additive, unless you have a trade-off of hours or something else at the main library.
Get that. Appreciate. Council member Palmer?
Well, I have a couple of questions. I'm going to come from a practical perspective. So you did a random, random survey or what was your survey? Was it users of the library? What, what did, what was the survey?
Yeah, we attempted to reach as many non-users as possible.
And how, how did you do that?
Well, we went to a bunch of different locations around the city. There was a Hy-Vee, there was the farmer's market.
You didn't mail, you didn't mail out random ones to?
No, but that is what's next.
Okay, so slide 57, you have a bunch of what you're going to do next as far as surveys go and stuff. You mentioned that cardholders are falling in numbers. Is that what I heard?
Karen, can you comment on card numbers falling in?
Well, you, you said it, but.
I believe what I said was that they're not as high as they could be. And I can speak to our cardholders. So I think at the peak of our cardholders, we were around 72,000. That was when we were doing all of the schools years ago. We no longer do all of this, the kids in the schools. And around the pandemic time, a lot of people did fall off of our roles. Now we're about 53,000 cardholders.
So you are falling. Remind me, who paid for the study?
So this was tax levy. So we had part library reserves, part was an additional ask. This was our decision pack request that the library board prioritized as being the number one ask. So it was part decision pack, library reserves, library foundation.
Okay, so the, the news media, whatever, keeps talking about branches and you're talking about storefronts. You're talking about a storefront, is that kind of? Okay, so the, the news media, whatever, keeps talking about branches and you're talking about storefronts. You're talking about a storefront. Is that kind of what we're looking at?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. And in the past, the, the head librarians are always against doing anything that was not just a branch. They wanted to have a library and another library and another library to make it fair. Does, does that?
And I'll speak a little bit to that with the history. So I think 2005, whoever was here in 2005, there was a, a lot of folks that were asking about branches, branches, branches. And at that time, there was a survey that was done, again, 20 years ago, that said, there's absolutely no appetite, no branches, no, don't do it. We want more, but don't do the branch thing.
And then the current library that we have now, the librarians or whoever was there helped design the library, right?
Um, we have, I think we've now have folks retired that were part of the design process. I think.
It wasn't public works. I mean, you had free parking, you had an entryway. That, that was been the complaint, the entryway is too far, but it's been the complaint for 20 years.
Uh, it's been the complaint for 30 years.
Okay. In, in, in watching your, your, your library board meeting, you were talking in there about active learning, the digital on the rise is on the rise, training, getting into different areas. To me, that, that rang the bell of community education and not really the job of the library. And so that was, that was kind of disappointing to, I, I'm looking at how do we fill a need, what need needs to be filled? And I don't think that those are being, are a need that needs to be filled by the library. And so that, that was disappointing for me to read that that's kind of an area that you were thinking of. I, I kind of almost go back to Mr. Wall's description is that the library is, is kind of going away as we know it. And this is kind of the last gasp of libraries of trying to reinvent themselves to stay open. I, I'm not particularly sure that, that, you know, doing that makes sense for us. And I know at one time that, not too long ago, we were down to six days a week. We went up to seven. What is our tax levy? About $7 million?
We've, we've been operating seven days a week.
But you, it used to be six.
Um, we have the same number of hours that we were offered pre-pandemic. It used to be a very wonky schedule where in the school year, non-summer, you, the hours were 9:30 in the morning to nine at night, Monday through Thursday, 9:30 to 5:30 on Saturday and Sunday, and then 1:30 to 5:30 on Sunday. I know your face is saying what our patron said, because then in the summer, everybody goes to the lake and the library would only be open from 9:30 to 1:30 on Saturdays and closed on Sundays. During the pandemic, everything changed. It was perfect opportunity to change the hours. So we took the math of all of those hours of the open times in the some, the school year and the summer, divided those out. And, and now we have 64 hours a week on average. It's 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. Monday through Thursday, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So.
And I guess I'll just close with, with the, the attitude that the parking is a problem. When you say that, it becomes more of a problem. It's a self fulfilling prophecy. So I don't want to go downtown because it's inconvenient. No one wants to be down there. And, and to me, we've been trying to promote parking in downtown, that it is half the time their ramps are empty. Or they're half empty, I should say, apologize. And, and, you know, so, so somehow, you know, your marketing needs to be, we're not.
Yeah, and then I, oh, sorry, that, I would say that's one of our recommendations is look at a different way to communicate, right? Because we, we're not saying it's a barrier. This is what we heard from your community. When we asked people, you know, are you accessing the library, using it? What we heard over and over is, you know, being downtown is hard, parking, there's no parking, there's this, you know, we heard those things. So what we're recommending is that we look at the parking lot. Maybe we, I think you even recommended, maybe even coloring it a little bit, making it more inviting. But then we also recommended in one of those is that, like, how do you communicate that parking, you know, the first hour is free? How do you do it? But it's potentially a campaign. I've seen those done with other organizations to say, no, no, you can access us. This is how you do it. And I think some of that is looking at a different way to tell the story of the library and the access through the parking garage.
We have budget coming up and it's going to be tough to keep it a 3% increase. So some decisions will have to be made. So thank you.
And like I said, we also mentioned, we think there's some opportunities to work with a foundation to use funding, fundraising to help tell some of those stories as pilot programs too. So it does.
Okay, we're going to go to Mayor Norton and then councilmember Miller.
Thank you. Couple of things, I would just say thank you for the work that you did. Many of you know, that have been around for a while, I'm a huge fan of dispersing information out within the community. And I'm excited by what I'm finally hearing, which is it doesn't just have to be a branch library. It can be something innovative, something different, utilizing space that's there, partnering with other organizations. So I'm super excited about that. And I think, you know, moving ahead, there can be ways to reduce costs, still get the library services out into the community where they'll be utilized. I will say, one of the things, I think councilmember Keen kind of mentioned it. It doesn't mean they have to be full libraries. And we've seen examples, just like during the pandemic, where people order things and then can go pick it up. You can go to a library, you can use what used to be the card catalog, right? You look online, search around, find the book that you want and say, I'll be back tomorrow. And it can be delivered by tomorrow at your local area. It doesn't have to be a full library with services that are there or books that are there at that exact moment. Also, I, I think we need to, I, I'm looking forward to your creative ideas about the dollars and about how we do this cost effectively. Because I think there's a fear that if we talk about this, it means an increase in the levy, right? And, and it may mean we're going to decide to spend more money on the library. And it may mean that there are different, more creative ways to do this that wouldn't necessarily cost much. And I think the comments that we just heard from Karen are a perfect example where we didn't get more staff and have more time. We looked at the staff and used them at different times. And we have the same amount of staff and the hours are just different and they meet the community's needs better. So that's a perfect example of things that could be done to accommodate that. The other thing is with the, the numbers dropping. I do remember a day where all children in schools were, were encouraged to get a library card and everybody filled it out. And maybe we can go back to that, you know, I don't know. I also know, and this is my gripe, was before Karen. Some of us were pushed off the rolls at the library because they updated their system. And if you hadn't been in for a while, when you went in, they said, sorry, you don't have a card anymore. You have to start all over. So some of it was self inflicted by the library because of the system and the way it ran, right? So I don't think we can just look at the numbers and say, they dropped, so therefore it's not being utilized, or it will never be utilized the same. And maybe we just have to get people who didn't have a card re-signed up because I was one of those, those people. And lastly, where are great libraries? You showed some examples. And I, I, do you have a, is there a, like, a way to find a list of creative libraries? Because I would be interested in, okay, so if you guys could provide that, that'd be really helpful. I'd love to try to look at one in a city near me or city near somewhere I might be. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Fredericks. I will be quick, I promise. Of your 53,000 cardholders at the library, how many are used once a month?
So the National Community Survey that we just did had this information in it, and I, I can get you that number. Yes. Yeah.
I was going to ask six months and a year, so I guess if we don't have a month, I won't ask six months.
I, I do not, I can get, I can get that data for you. Yes.
Thank you. And just, I, I just want to reemphasize a point that the mayor made. I'm very interested in seeing the philanthropic and the foundation, kind of that private sector support and, you know, what kind of estimates that you, you can see for that and the work to get tho- those funds as well. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate your time.
And our next presentation, Mr. Mueller. And I was pleasantly surprised to see that your slide deck is only 16 pages to it. So this one may be brief. So take it away.
Promise. Thank you for having us. So President Schubert, Mayor Norton, members of city council, I'm Elliot Mueller with Rochester Community Development. And I'm joined today virtually by Christie Trisco, who is a senior planner for Bolton and Mink, who is the consultant that we hired to assist city teammates with this five-year update. So we're here today just to provide you the information that we collected and the few steps we have remaining before we bring this to you for consideration.
Are we having some slide present concerns there?
No, we shouldn't be.
Oh, Christie, you want to introduce yourself?
Uh, yeah. Hi, Mayor, council president, council members and administrator. I really appreciate your time. My name is Christie Trisco. I appreciate being able to be digital today, working with Bolton and Mink, with Elliot and their team on what we're calling the Planning to Succeed update for 2025. And that was it for me, Elliot. If you want to grab into your slides, I know these guys want to get to a break and move on to their other session moments. I want to be sensitive to your time.
So I guess for my slide deck, is it a separate PowerPoint? Oh. Okay. All right. So just for everybody's information, but just, excuse me, specifically for the four new councilmembers on, in short, a comprehensive plan is a document that's collaborative in nature between city teammates as well as city residents. It is a guiding document for how we facilitate future development based on designated policies and values that the community identifies. So for instance, in 2018, when the plan was adopted, we sought out to enhance the relationship between land use and transportation network, design an urban environment to benefit the livability of Rochester's neighborhoods, and to strategize infrastructure spending for current and future growth. And the plan sought to do that by using these seven core principles, and I won't read them. But you can read them yourself, but wrote, these break down into policies that are then further broken down into goals, all of which were brought forward by community members. And again, a collaborative effort. And so before I hand it over to Christie, I just want to say thank you to Mayor Norton, as well as my city teammates from all various departments for helping us provide updated data, graphics and figures. Again, this was a technical update, not an overhaul. We still very much believe that these seven core principles are valid for today and going in the future. So, Christie, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Elliot. We've got our, our next slide here. If you can forward it for me. Thanks. So I just wanted to take just a, a brief second here to talk about our team. We've got Maura Honstein. She's our project manager, myself, the senior planner from the Rochester office. Got Sarah Swedenberg with the planner who worked with engagement support as we put some of these elements on the website so we can keep up. And finally, David Stanberg from GIS, who helped us with all our mapping. Thanks. Our team approach here is is really to to a cohesive effort with partnership with the city. Bolton and Mink really worked on a computer or, you know, a computer, sorry, community centric approach where we worked with all of our staff. I would really like to take just a brief moment to thank transportation and transit. We've worked with DEI, historic preservation, and certainly the engineers from the city. And we're very, very appreciative of all of their efforts as we've spent the last eight plus months working on this with them and, and really appreciate their time and value to update, to do these technical updates to the plan. Thank you. Next slide. So kind of the key areas of our review, what we were tasked to do on this particular plan was to look at updates specifically in residential, mixed use, land uses, industrial, and then what are these emerging trends? We're really grateful to finally have gotten the Maxfield Housing Study ready for us, which just happened a couple of weeks ago. So we've been able to incorporate that into our plan, which was one of the four tenants that we're trying to do, to accomplish. Then we've got our engagement pieces. With that, we looked specifically, we started a, a big workshop here in November where we had a lot of the departments show up and work through what are their key concerns and interests in this technical update and what we needed to address to get all of that in the plan. We also had an industrial, the city hosted an industrial open house back in 2024. And so we were able to talk to that group. Specifically, as we said, two of our, our four updates for this update was mixed use and industrial. We really, well, really wanted to make sure that we reviewed those properties that could be used in the future for industrial uses. So we got that input. Of course, another big piece of this was the mayor's vision for 2050, which began in 2024. And we've kind of got a, a wrap up on that. That's going to make a, a big moment in this update, making sure that all of those same components, I think we got over 900 responses. So that a summary of that and also the direction from that plan gets put in our update. And finally, last but not least, we're also meeting with Mayor on the DMC, making sure that the downtown components that involve those groups, the data and their direction are met in this plan. I know that they are working towards getting their five-year plan update. Some of that data should be available for us this third week in April. So with that, we're going to insert that technical information into this plan as well. Next slide is just kind of the overview of our scope. Again, we really just had those three components working on this technical update. We started this in July of 2024. Through project setup, you can kind of read through this slide, public engagement, our draft plan, addressing those feedbacks. And we really hope that we're on task here to get an adoption by July of this year. Main components of this comp plan are still really following all the visions, principles and priorities, which is the base element of how comp plans are written. So we are using the document, your visions and principles as we move forward in this update. This is again, another graph you guys are familiar with, but it's, it's a key component of this major plan. Then I just wanted to briefly talk about all of the, the plans that we have used and reviewed. We've got 20 listed here. I think there are more online. So I don't, I don't see, we've, we've just generated a lot of review from a lot of different documents. It's really important that each of these documents, we've summarized them, some of that is, will end up in the plan. Again, all of the departments from the city who came together to help us, you know, combine and collate all of this information. I just could not be more thankful for them. But each of these documents have made the list, have been reviewed and will be in part, part of this update. Then I just wanted to talk a, just a few quick minutes here about what the technical update means. We are updating, we're using Census 2020, we're using American Community Survey. We are using ES, ESRI as update as well. And all of that information will help us move towards a, the, the final information, making sure that all of the data is updated and and is updated and present. So the last plan was 2018. We're updating everything to 2020, American Community Survey and the Maxfield Housing Study, which I just mentioned, is also a very key component of, of all that updated data, which helps us understand how land uses will be parsed out in the future. Next slide. Thank you. Again, just some of the things that we've analyzed and looked at specifically here is the infrastructure, transportation and transit. We've also analyzed and updated all of that data. You can see some of this information. Just taken quite a, quite a bit of time to make sure that everything is still in trend for what we need to do into the future, making sure that land uses are appropriately sized for the future as we move into 2024. You can see here, we've got some analysis done based on, you know, streets and roads and utilities as far as city parks and even overall size. We've also got some analysis based on what really happened during COVID. What is, you know, are we working from home? And you can see that, that more folks are working from home and how that changes. and how that changes the dynamic of community. And then we also have the, the new link system, so new transit updates. So these are some of the, the new components that are happening for this update. Next slide. I think that the two other areas that, that I hadn't really, we hadn't started with as a goal. It certainly wasn't part of our task, but we've, we've added it into. But we are adding and including a section on diversity, equity, and inclusion, emphasis and analysis. So we're working with staff on some of the topics are, what are the true costs of housing? What are our true living expenses? Home ownership and how that connects to health issues, household access and healthy foods. So we've added those sections to this plan. Thank you Chow and Jacob for their specific time on this. We'll have a few maps added and the text for this update. We're also working, we've worked with Molly Patterson-Lundgren on historic preservation, appreciate her time on that, working with historic patterns, historic preservation and public art and that, how that is changing and what those future goals are into the future. Next slide. Of course, we're a land planning, hand-mapping and engineering firm. So I wanted to make sure that we had some great, clean, updated maps for everything. So we are updating somewhere between 13 and 18 new maps for this comprehensive plan, bringing good GIS data back so that we have, we have all the latest information. This, these maps kind of shows, highlight some of the new projects. But again, our emphasis was on residential, industrial, mixed use, and emerging trends. We've got a few of those maps shown here in front of you. But these are the snapshots. We will be producing 11x17s for the actual PDFs as the take-home for this. Plus, we'll also have the big maps for all of the staff. Again, helpful from all departments who came forward to review these maps, make sure that they are updated. And the GIS department that helped us generate the base data for this map. Thank you. And next slide. So just kind of next steps for us. We're going to confirm all the maps. Again, we just mentioned we're, we've done between 12 and 18. I think we'll be the end of this process when we've got a few combination of maps ready. So we'll have maps and staff. We'll review the text with us as well. We're going to share and make those revisions. We'll get that final draft plan prepared for you guys. And again, just really want to emphasize that this has been the city's team project. We're going to align future growth management maps and the land use map, future land use map in urban service areas as we move forward and provide that with city council. Elliot, did you have any other things you wanted to add or comments about this?
No, other than thank you. And again, this is wrapping up soon, and it's been a lot of work. So we appreciate. And we'll, have any questions you guys have, we can answer.
Great.
If you have any technical questions, more to Christie probably, but.
Great. Thank you, Elliot, and thank you, Christie. So I have some questions just on that last slide. So it sounds like this will come for adoption to the council in June or July? So my question is, with these final plan drafts, draft, and the providing the council with grow, growth management options, when will we see, see that draft? And how much lead time will we have to our planned adoption?
That's a great question, and I think we can work with you on that.
Okay. Because I know it's going to be a big document. So four days is usually.
We've actually halved it, so.
Yes, I would, I would like to report we have cut almost 200 pages out of this, this update.
Mr., Ms. Woodward.
Council President, I think we can work on trying to get the draft out earlier for review. I also just want to note that the, probably the growth management map and future land use map will come at a later date. Those are going to require some additional outreach as we're building that, and it will be consistent with the comprehensive plan. But we can work with getting the, the full draft out. And it will be also need to go to the Planning Commission as well. So it will be kind of available at that point in time. So we can also share with council the link so that there is ability to look at it ahead of time.
That helps. Planning and zoning commission, getting it before us is always good. So I am going to go to Councilmember Miller and then Councilmember Palmer, and then Mayor Norton. And it, and so Councilmember Miller, go.
I'll be concise. On slide 13, public art is listed under historic preservation. I'm glad to see public art listed, but I'm surprised to see it there. Any context for why, why that?
Yeah, I think in the plan, it's coupled with urban design.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, Commissioner Miller. Yeah, it's just, it's in that particular section of the comp plan. It's, it's a very long document, and it just ended up kind of in that same, that same street.
And then potentially a bigger question. But when I look at the comprehensive pan, principles, I see emphasize fiscal sustainability. We have a lot of maps here. What I don't see in the mapping is any sort of consideration of revenue and cost, service cost analysis. And I know firms like Urban Three are moving towards a property value per acre map. You will see these 3D maps and also looking at cost of services. We just had a conversation about where to put, you know, potential extra library services. People would like them close to where they live. And I think that missing piece of the analysis is, how are we planning so that services like that are fiscally responsible in other places? And I think obviously the, the unsaid reason for why the library is downtown is because it's the most service and amenity-rich. And it's also the densest property value. So I wonder about that element of mapping.
Yeah, Christie, I can take this. I think that's a great point. I think when you look at all the maps separated, they kind of tell that story. But I understand we want one that combines that all. And so I think that's something that we can work with Bolton and Mink on. And if not, we can, city teammates can try to take that banner, so.
Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. What I would like to have is a map for, for what we have for lots that are available right now for R1 and R2s. Is that going to be, so we can see that?
We do keep track of vacant land, but I would think that it's not publicly available. But I'll defer to Irene or Taryn.
I think that is one of those things that we are also looking at, Councilman Palmer, in terms of what's available land. And we're doing some of that analysis as well as we're looking at the Maxfield Study in terms of what those needs are and where does that align with the land that we have available? So I, I hear your question of like, what does that look like? And I think that is part of the discussion we're having in terms of what information and how do we clearly show that to the public?
So the second part would be the Maxfield Study that just came out, or it's, it's a draft form. But it, it shows that we don't have enough of the R1 and R2. And, and so how is that going to be incorporated into this, this plan? If, if you're going to be done in two months?
Yep. So we have done preliminary analysis on acreage of low-density residential within city limits. That's undeveloped, as well as outside city limits. That calculation has come back showing that there is adequate land. It's just a matter of development patterns and economics. But we would look more into it on, you know, where that development's happening.
Well, the Maxfield Study in the draft says that it's, we're severely slow on R1 and R2 lots.
Yep. And we've seen that too with the fringe development. It's behind. But as a matter of land develop, or land use, we have the land, not the zoning maybe, but.
Go ahead.
I would just add on, we're, we are taking kind of the, the numbers from the Maxfield Study. So we did get the updated numbers in terms of looking at what does our current, you know, where, where in the UDC does that, do we anticipate that growth? What does that land, and trying to calculate as we continue to grow, knowing those numbers are going to change, or well, actually that we kind of anticipate what those needs are? Are we going to have enough R1 and R2 zoning? And that is part of the analysis that we are doing as part of the comprehensive plan.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mayor Norton.
Mine is similar, but a little off. I'm wondering about the updated numbers for Maxfield. Everybody refers to them. Everybody seems to have seen them, but they aren't public yet. Is that correct? Because I haven't seen the final copies. Does anybody know?
Ms. Woodward.
There is a draft that has been reviewed that the Housing Coalition has seen. We asked for the draft numbers as soon as we could get them so that we could incorporate them into the comprehensive plan. I think the intention is for the Maxfield Study to become public probably by the end of this month into early, into early May. So it is anticipated that we're kind of, the coalition is looking at those and putting together, how do we best share out this data? Because it is about 300 and some pages, but those will be forthcoming.
Wonderful. And I hopefully will have a presentation on that. But the point I wanted to make has to do with not just the Maxfield. We also have your, what, what was put on the screen was the old strategic plan. And this board is talking about a potential change or a new strategic plan. And I'm a little hopeful, frustrated, and hopeful that this decision by this board can be made before and considered before you make your final decision, or it's another 10 years before we'll be able to discuss it again. So the timing is a little off on this. And I'm hoping either we speed up the strategic planning discussion or you hold off until you get the results before you go public.
Deputy Administrator Parrish, do you have any response?
President Mayor, members of the council, we do have a draft that we're hoping to be sharing with the council. We just really need to find time on the study session. So it feels like we're going to be able to align that, both with this and hopefully with the budget process as well.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Keen.
I'm going to pass my time.
Okay. Any other questions on this? It went quickly. So thank you, Christie, and thank you, Elliot.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Administrator Parrish to give us a preview of upcoming council and study session.
Yeah, just a good evening. Mike will obviously take you through your closed session process here momentarily. Bigger study session for next month as well. So a lot of conversation here tonight. On the 28th of April, we'll have our factors influencing the budget, outside agency process and the draft fee schedule. So really getting grounded in the budget. So you had a lot, a lot of opportunities to invest tonight. And then we'll be looking for that feedback going into the budget process about what you want to prioritize and some of the key factors driving the budget. It's a really great opportunity. Just encourage you to think ahead. Like this is the guidance that Allison really will, City Administrator Zelm will ultimately use to formulate a recommendation to you. So it's a pretty important night for the council that way. We also have the City Council Rules and Procedures Review. There will not be a ton of content on that. It really is just an opportunity for you to reflect on the rules. If there's anything you want further exploration on, but more of an open discussion in the council's court that evening. And then we have a closed session that evening as well to discuss labor negotiation parameters. And so we'll be looking for feedback and bringing your recommendations there. Otherwise, May, your only study session item is a city council bus tour. And we have a great evening in the works for you there as well.
Well, I hope the weather is nice that day. I will now turn it over to Attorney Spindler Craig to lead us into our closed session.
Thank you, Mr. President. Consistent with the published agenda pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3B, the council will adjourn to a closed session to discuss a pending litigation matter, Molly Dennis v. City of Rochester et al. The decision to move into closed session is based on the need for absolute confidentiality, which outweighs the purposes of the open meeting law. I would invite the council president to solicit a motion to move into executive session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3B, because the need for absolute confidentiality outweighs the purpose of the open meeting law.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Fredericks and seconded by Councilmember Wall. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.